Welcome to the Monday, April 4th, 2022 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pander Leon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Preschler.
Here.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back in this august space again. For me, it's the first time back since one meeting last summer, so very pleasant to see everybody here. And we've got a full agenda tonight, so I think we'll dive right in. First item on the agenda is an approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring deputy fire chief Kevin Cronin. And I'd like to read the resolution, please. Whereas Kevin J. Cronin has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since July 29th, 1998, and whereas Kevin J. Cronin will honorably retire from the city on April 1st, 2022, whereas Kevin J. Cronin served in the following positions during his dedicated career: firefighter, firefighter paramedic, fire lieutenant, fire battalion chief, fire deputy fire chief, member of the Lake County Hazmat Team, MABS Division's 4 SRT Operations Chief, Foreign Fire Insurance Board Member, Lake Forest Firefighters Association Board, Lake Forest Public Education, and Lake Forest Fire Training Officer. In addition, Kevin J. Cronin obtained a bachelor's degree from Southern Illinois University and received numerous accommodations and letters of gratitude for his outstanding service throughout his career. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Kevin J. Cronin for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Kevin with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the April 4th, 2022 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager and staff in the fire department here. Just wanted to say what a great community to work for, a great organization to work for. I was honored to be the deputy chief, and I know it's been passed to a very capable person. And with the help of all them, you know, I made it through safely for 23 years. And retiring, very happy to have worked for the city of Lake Forest. Got nothing else to say except what a great community and organization to work for. So, thank you.
Thank you. So who's going to be the new skipper? Kevin was instrumental in getting the whole force up to speed on the rescue boat. And thank you for that. That was a nice contribution.
My pleasure.
All right, well, thank you very much. And we'll miss you. You don't have to stay through all of them. You're done. I think you're officially already retired. The next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I think you guys have enough on your agenda this evening, so I'm pleased to say I have no report.
The next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak about anything that is not on our agenda tonight, this is the opportunity. So I will wait a second here to see if any hands are raised. And seeing none, we will move on to our next item. I'm going to change the order of the agenda. I'm not sure what agenda may have been, what the one that was available to everybody was indicated. But we are going to be hearing the new business item now instead of later in the meeting. And for clarification, what's before the city council is a formal recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board. The city council will have to approve the recommendation or reject the recommendation before making any other recommendations for consideration. The procedure will be as follows. The staff will make a presentation. I will then open discussion to the city council. That'll be followed by public comment. And after public comment, I'll return this to the city council for final comments, questions, and a motion regarding the recommendation. So the first item, this item is consideration of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board in support of improvements of the athletic fields at Deer Path Park with artificial turf fields and a request for authorization to proceed with next steps to implement the recommendation. This is a recommendation to approve going forward with the design work for this project. That's all. So I introduce Sally Swarthout to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Pander Leon and city council. Thank you for welcoming me in tonight. On March 15th, 2022, the Park and Recreation Board voted 5 to 1 to support improvement to the athletic fields at Deer Path Park with artificial turf. Therefore, I am here tonight to offer a consideration of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board in support of improvement of the athletic fields at Deer Path Park with artificial turf fields and a request for authorization to proceed with next steps to implement the recommendation. How did we get here? In the spring of 2018, recreation program and our affiliate associations experienced extreme weather events that caused cancellation of 50% of games and practices throughout the entire spring. We continued to see that trend in the summer and fall of 2018, and we started to search for a resolution. This trend again continued through the spring, summer, and fall of 2019, as well as through 2020, which was a challenged year for play as it was. And again, we continue to see these cancellations through '21. And then again, we have started it up again in '22 with cancellations of practices last weekend, tonight, and most likely next weekend due to weather issues. This is too many days of cancellation for our children. They need to be outside and playing. This is a quick project timeline, and it's just a reminder of what we've done to get to this point tonight. As I mentioned, staff started looking for a resolution as we started to see that trend. So in 2019, 2018, 2019, in partnership with the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation, we initiated a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And that master plan listed priorities throughout the community for needs. Athletic fields rose to the top. In September of 2020, as the problem continued, we started an athletic field assessment that was to raise, investigate the feasibility of natural and synthetic, to evaluate our fields and make recommendations for improvement. That moved on to the workshop in July of 2021 with city council. Where the city council received the assessment and made the directive to move forward to investigate the layout improvements of the existing natural turf or to look to synthetic turf. As we moved through that process, we initiated a schematic design to give us an idea as to what numbers might look like as we went forward for both natural and synthetic. We also undertook a community engagement process that started with a survey and moved into some workshops. They led us to the March 15th Parks and Recreation Board meeting and the consideration this evening. As I mentioned, we did a, we started our community engagement with a survey to our residents. We had an extremely robust response. 730 people responded to this survey in fall of 2021. As you can see, maximizing field playability and health and safety were the top two criteria that the community felt we needed to investigate and provide. From the survey, we moved to a community engagement workshop in December of 2021. We hosted, the Park and Rec Board actually hosted this workshop in person at Deer Path Middle School. We provided the criteria that were numbered and ranked through the survey for our participants to review and critique. We asked them to rank them and put them on a scorecard. We also asked them to meet with their neighbors at discussion tables to talk about why they ranked their criteria the way they did. We collected those scorecards, and we put them together to gain information to move forward to the second workshop. We also took questions that we could bring to the second workshop and provide responses. Here is an example, here is the scorecard and the final ranking from the workshop number one. As you can see, player safety, maximize playability, and maximize field usage all landed at the top of the rank. As we moved into workshop number two, we actually held this workshop virtually. We wanted to make sure we expanded our reach to the community. And in this workshop, we responded to the themes and the questions that were identified at the first workshop. These participants also had a preliminary view of the four athletic field options identified. We utilized this workshop, and we posted it to the web for a broader community access. We left the web up and the digital comment card up for an additional week so that folks would have the opportunity to provide their comments to this issue. Again, the takeaways from workshop number two: Playability is a top concern. Player safety is important. Sustainable practices should be included in design phase and balanced with other priorities. As well as, we were requested to go out to our neighboring communities and gather information about their synthetic turf. I want to stop right here and talk about community engagement. It's a very important process here in the city of Lake Forest. It hallmarks why we stand out. Residential feedback is a true value, and it leads to a better final resolution. On the lower left-hand corner, you'll see a bubble with a comment from one of our participants in the community workshops. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the local organizations that we engaged in the process. Additional research: We listened to those folks from workshop number two, and we identified our neighboring communities with synthetic turf fields. They are listed on the right side of the screen. We sent a survey to these entities, and we asked questions about their natural and synthetic turf. We asked about their usage, and we asked about their maintenance for both. Thirteen communities responded to our survey. And all of our respondents were very happy with the performance of their synthetic turf. They indicated that it extended the playing season. It reduced the weather-related cancellations. They also indicated that there were no noted increases in injury. Additionally, they let us know that there is extremely high demand for their synthetic turf and that there was less maintenance compared to the natural grass fields. Again, I'll leave this up for a few minutes or so, but these are just bubbles of what our neighbors were telling us, quotes that they wrote when we asked them for additional information. And as you can see, very supportive. One did note that the turf does get hotter than the natural grass, but there are definitely ways to mitigate that. So as the Park and Recreation Board listened to the staff's investigative process, they had some consideration. They took into consideration community feedback, the user group preferences, and the neighbor experiences of the four options that you are about to see. I do want to note, July 4th has come up consistently through this process. We do not have a definitive recommendation at this time, but we certainly will look, work very closely with the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation to make sure that this event goes on for many years. The Park and Recreation Board viewed four options for the solution to our athletic field challenges. Option number one was a business as usual, basically current fields as they are. Decidedly not the best solution for our issues. Option number two was the natural grass improvements. And yes, natural and grass, we could improve the drainage. It would require additional maintenance to keep the fields in top condition, and that top condition is important to make sure there's player safety. Natural grass would also require additional full-time employees to ensure the high quality. It will utilize synthetic pesticides and fertilizers to meet user expectations and will not effectively extend the playing season. Natural grass does not offer our community an option. Currently, we would, we would only have natural grassed fields, and the youth of our community would not have the ability to experience synthetic turf that they may need as they move through their high school athletics and into college. And even with updated draining, Wayne will force cancellations. Wet fields tear, and sometimes it takes multiple days to repair and heal. Additionally, option two does provide the opportunity for four baseball and softball fields as well as two full-size grid fields for football and soccer that would run east-west due to the baseball field alignment. In order to fit them within that grass area, the field would have to run east-west. Option three is the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation. They felt that this answer best met the top three criteria that was stated in the priorities of our residents. It maximizes playability. It extends the playing season by several months. It minimizes cancellations for weather, with the exception of severe weather such as lightning or hail. It gives people choice of playing surfaces: Synthetic turf at Deer Path Community Park, 14 natural grass fields in our other locations. It would leave a 6.2-acre buffer of natural grass between the playing surface and the river. And it also provides a revenue stream. The park board had concerns expressed and considered. They considered that the material may not be recyclable when it's time to replace. They also considered that synthetic turf will need occasional infill replacement. It has a heat issue, which again could be mitigated, and does have potential health impact from some synthetic materials. The park board also considered, based on community feedback, that engineering design should incorporate environmentally friendly solutions when possible, such as infill type, bio swales, rain garden, and natural plannings to offset. Option number three would provide four baseball softball fields, four full-size grid fields, multi-use, football, soccer, and lacrosse. The fields can run north and south because of one simultaneous, or simultaneous surface that allows for more configurations and provides flexibility. The Park and Recreation Board also considered option four, which is a hybrid of natural grass and synthetic turf improvements. It does improve the playability. It did provide options for users, but more limited than option three, simply because the surfaces would be smaller. It is a reduction of overall playability. It carries combined maintenance needs and cost as both options two and three. It limits the flexibility of the field placement, and it has programming concerns. If you look at the picture, you'll see that there will actually be a buffer in between the synthetic field and the natural grass field, which will, will reduce the ability to play and configure sports fields. As we spoke to our user groups and our neighbors, they suggested that most folks will want to rent the turf, and so it will become a demand issue as well. This is a very high level, and I have to say, highlighted little estimation of total costs over the course of 10, 15, 20, and 25 years. Its total cost estimates one-time costs, operating costs, and turf replacement. It's important to note that the one-time cost actually has a 10% contingency and a 12% inflation included into it. And the asterisk years that require turf replacement has a 3% annual cost increase calculated, so that we have a little bit of a buffer built in. Again, very high, high levels. This is something that would certainly come back to you at your November workshop. This illustrates the 1 to 25 with 15-year financing. And you'll see that the costs are relatively similar. The highlighted orange and white areas are years that we wouldn't possibly have to do a turf replacement, the cover, the grass, the carpet. I think it's important to note that should we be able to provide a potential revenue stream, we would be putting money away to save for that carpet replacements in those 10-year increments. And so the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to you tonight was based on the engagement process that identified the needs and the priorities of our community. They hosted their workshop and did their due diligence to get to this point. And they measured professional programming and maintenance perspectives as well as our local neighbor experiences. They also recommended that this is, that synthetic turf does best meet our community's needs as stated from our residents through this process, but that sustainable options should be considered whenever possible. And again, they felt that option three gives our users a choice, the choice of synthetic and natural grass. It's, it provides four multi-use synthetic turf plus four synthetic baseball fields as well as 14 natural grass multi-use in the inventory. And I think it's important to note that synthetic would allow for improvement to our current natural fields and possibly the ability to dedicate grass fields to a specific sport in each of the parks. So I offer you for consideration that council approve the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board and authorize and direct the city manager to conduct a request for proposals process to select a firm and complete an engineering and design study for artificial turf athletic fields at Deer Path Park. After completion of the request for proposals process, return to the city council for consideration of the award of the contract or reject the recommendation from the Park and Recreation Board and authorize and direct the city manager to conduct an RFP process for an engineering and design study for natural turf athletic fields or a hybrid approach at Deer Path Park. After completion of the request for proposal process, return to city council for consideration of the award of the contract or to table the discussion of athletic field improvements. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, hang on for just a second. The first, first thing we will do, as I mentioned before, is we're going to consider the recommendation of the Park and Rec Board, which was the first of the three things that was listed in Sally's summation there. So just keep that in mind, that that's the first item that'll be discussed. Before I bring it back to the council, I don't usually do this, but I wanted to make sure everybody kind of knew where I stood on this. And, and so I have a few, a few comments. What's before the council tonight is a five to one recommendation from our Park and Rec Board that we approve the completion of the design of a synthetic turf option for Deer Path Park that would extend the playing season and reduce frequent cancellations due to poor field conditions. With increasing rainfall, our playing fields have suffered excessive cancellations and generally poor playing conditions. This is the problem at hand, and this problem needs to be solved. Lake Forest is unique. We don't have a local park district taxing body. It keeps our taxes lower, but we have, as a result, in my opinion, under-invested in Parks and Rec for many years as things like roads and sewers have demanded our attention. Now we have an opportunity to play catch-up and even leapfrog to take Lake Forest into a best-in-class situation with important sustainability features attached. There are some serious and immediate health issues associated with the large amount of goose activity that the middle schoolers and others who play on these fields collect on their shoes and track into the school and elsewhere. We actually, I was surprised to receive a letter about this from the Deer Path Middle School Wellness Department. You know, they, they track it around, and sometimes they fall face-first into it. Eliminating the grass that the geese feed on will, in my opinion, do the most to protect the children's health. And I believe this outweighs any speculative concerns about long-term exposure to the artificial turf. There is no grass option that will extend the playing season. So the cost per playing hour is automatically going to be lower just by that, just by adding two months to the playing season. At a bigger picture level, there are over 1,000 new families in town, most of them with children, in the last two years. The demand for facility, for our facilities is growing. The Lake Forest Lacrosse Association experienced a 42% increase in its enrollment this spring versus last year. The demand that we solve our poor field conditions and short playing season will only increase over time. The pressure will grow as the population grows and demands to be addressed. After schools, recreational facilities are perhaps the next most important factor for families choosing to move. These are the buyers of our homes. The low interest rates and COVID tailwinds that we've had behind our real estate market are going away. We can't afford a glaring deficiency like these unplayable athletic fields. Solving this problem will help every homeowner in Lake Forest. This proposal comes to us based on a carefully developed strategic plan that was enthusiastically endorsed by this council in 2019 and a strong five to one endorsement by our experts on the Park and Rec Board after much public engagement as Sally went through. on the Park and Rec Board, after much public engagement as Sally went through. We need to respect these processes, not ignore them in the face of a small group of vocal opponents. There is no perfect solution. Some group will be unhappy in whatever we do, but our beach would not exist as it is today if Lake Forest leaders in the 1980s had been cowed by detractors. Finally, this council needs to show that it can lead and leave a legacy for future generations of Lake Foresters. We will not be remembered fondly for what we did not do. With that, I will take a quick pause and just say that I'm going to turn it over to council discussion, and that, you know, the purpose of council discussion is to elicit information and conduct a debate in front of our residents with open minds. If any member of the council wants to present prepared remarks, please keep them brief so that we can focus our time on the discussion itself. With that, I would open the floor to questions and comments by the council.
George, if I may, and I am going to do my best to keep them brief. First off, I do want to thank Director Swarthout for the immense amount of work that you've put into it, and I don't know if there are any members of the park board here, but I was fortunate enough as the council liaison to the Parks and Rec Board to watch them go through this process, and it really is a monumentous, it's a monumental subject that we're talking about. I specifically do want to acknowledge each and every one of them, but most specifically, Chairman Paul Best, who I think conducted his meeting with the highest degree of professionalism and being very patient and mindful that all of the opinions that were presented there are important to us all individually. And I think as we move forward through this evening, being respectful to one another is imperative, so I want to thank everybody in advance. I do have some comments, though, and I am going to try and pare them down, Mayor, and I want to touch on some topics. I'm going to go at it from the government perspective initially. Our form of city government is driven by process, and we have multiple boards and commissions that vet this information, and they do the good and hard work and present us with recommendations, and each and every one of those individuals is volunteering their time, so I think we have to acknowledge that fact from the get-go. You know, indeed, my friend Alderman Bushman, and I mean that, Alderman Rumel, had indicated not too long ago that it's imperative that we respect the recommendations of our boards and commissions, and that they are the foundations of our system of government, and I thank you for those sage words. They're very important. The Parks and Rec Board did vote five-to-one, and I'm aware that is a compelling vote from a board. I'm also aware of the fact that we've had some considerations from members of the public that they're concerned about allocating funds, possibly in an area that they don't feel is worthwhile. And I want to remind everybody that we live in a community. We allocate funds to ravine repair. We allocate funds to school districts. We allocate funds to libraries. We allocate funds to senior center, and not every one of us is using those facilities, but I think it's incumbent upon us to think of us as a community effort, and I would ask that you all take that into consideration. We have a user group of these fields that is, I believe, sorely underrepresented up here. I see one person on this council that is dramatically impacted by that, and forgive me for saying this to my colleagues, I see a lot of gray hair and receding hairlines with the rest of us, and I think it's important for us to look at not just our own usage and how we allocate funds, but look really more on the long term in terms of who's going to use us, not just now, but in the future, and I really think that it's important for some of us who are a little long in the tooth to take those things into consideration. Looking at a 30,000-foot view, the demographics of this community, as a mayor has indicated, have changed, and they're continuing to change. As we get into this post-pandemic real estate environment, some of our deficiencies are going to start showing up more and more, and this is clearly one of them, and I think this is a consideration that we have to take in terms of our property values. I want to try and cut this down. One of the big issues for me, and I think for all of us here who have concerns, it's the environmental impact, and I don't want anybody to think that any of us here don't take that into consideration. If we choose to move forward with the Parks and Rec Board recommendation, I would ask, I'm certainly not in a position to demand, but we would investigate things like CO2 offsets. Is it possible where we can look at this and see if we can mitigate some of the changes that we're going to bring in? Is it possible for the stormwater management, and I think actually Director Swarthout has done that, look and see what we can do to filter out some of the microplastics that indeed will impact us? Is it possible to get a recycling pledge that's enforceable? And again, I've seen some comments from individuals where regretfully they've called the manufacturers liars, and I would encourage people to avoid that tone of discussion because we're all trying to do the right thing here for everybody, not just certain special interest groups, and we want to take those things into consideration, and part of this funding for design will take that into consideration, and I think we need to be thoughtful rather than reactionary, but bearing in mind the importance of the environment is a critical and important component. Essentially, we're here because what we have does not meet the standards, not just of our community, but of any community. I did take the opportunity yesterday to walk on each and every field in Lake Forest yesterday, and I'm not sure if any of my fellow aldermen did. I needed to put boots on because they are effectively unplayable, and it's just not right that we have taxpayers in this community paying their taxes for a product, for a service we are failing at. We are failing, and there's no question about that, and I want you to think about that. And who are we failing? Typically, the people who don't really have a voice, the kids, the new members of our community, the people who are not politically engaged, and I think this is a time to right that wrong. The user groups are unanimously in favor of this, and quite honestly, what I see in front of us is a hybrid of a hybrid because we're talking about one park in a system of 14, and within that one park, we're already talking about only utilizing a portion of it. So I'm going to caution people, I will say it's a hybrid of a hybrid, and to push back even farther, a hybrid of a hybrid of a hybrid starts to sound silly. Lastly, I do want to touch on the PFAs, and I think this is something that we all need to take into consideration because the science is there from the IARC, and for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's the International Agency on Research for Cancer. It's a part of the World Health Organization, and it is listed on one of their lists, and the IARC has a list of known carcinogens, probable carcinogens, possible carcinogens, and PFAs are in the possible category. So I don't want to create a level of hysteria associated with that because I feel like some stakeholders might be poking the bear a little bit, and I would ask for a little truth and honesty in this discussion. I have a list of some of the other elements and chemicals that are on that list, but I'm just going to name it, I'm just going to go forward with it. So on the IARC Level 2B, we have things in there like Golden Seal Root Powder, magnetic fields, radio frequency electromagnetic fields. Interestingly enough, very hot beverages served above 65 degrees centigrade, not Fahrenheit centigrade, those are actually in Level 2A. They're more dangerous. Digoxin, I don't know if there are any physicians in the room, is used for atrial fibrillation. That's in the same category. Flagell, antibiotic and protozoa, that's on the list. Family of benzodiazepines sedatives is on the list. Nickel is on that list. So I want to bring some truth to this discussion. I want to bring balance. I'd love to avoid hysteria, but most importantly, I'd like for us to look at where we have failed in this community, and this is our opportunity to address it and move forward and make Lake Forest all that it can be. Mayor, thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate your time.
Other comments and questions from the council? Alderman Bushman.
I think I'm on, thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor, and my fellow aldermen. I respect you too, and recognize that at times there are processes, we both agree that our boards and commissions have made the right decision, and I think we both have been inside of feeling they've made the wrong decisions, but that's not why we're here today. And I just want to make sure we are looking at this thing in a balanced standpoint. I was somewhat surprised by your comments, Mr. Mayor, earlier on, and now Alderman Gashkarian's comments, that we're really getting into the merits, and I'm going to hold back a little bit because I'll keep my comments short, but I think it is important to recognize the input we have gotten from our citizens, and I've got notebooks, papers, emails galore, telephone calls that have weighed in on the issue much beyond the 730 citizens in the survey, and I think we do have significant issues here that we need to look at, we need to address, and I've tried to put in my mind what are these critical issues, and I've broken them down into four categories, and interestingly, if you put the four categories of critical issues, you can come up with a nice appropriate acronym, SPEC, namely the SPECS. What are we dealing with here? What are the questions that are raised by the SPECS? First one is safety and health, and questions have been raised, and data has been provided about the injury rates, doctors have weighed in, Mount Sinai has weighed in, there's a lot of data out there that, you know, I read and I worry about it. You know, what does it mean to the people who play on the field? Is there a greater exposure to safety? And same with the health issues in terms of the types of ingestion, absorption, inhalation that you can get on an artificial turf field versus a natural grass field. You know, that's the S. The P is playability. That's certainly the driver here. We all recognize that, and I can't think of any of us would want to sit here and say that nothing should be done. Option one is a no-brainer. It is not there. We have the question, okay, do we do natural grass? Improve it. Improve it with a dome, with a drainage, with layering, with proper soil, much improved. And what's that going to do? It is going to increase the playability of the field. Is it still going to be as good as artificial turf? No, it won't have that ability to extend the playtime, but the question I don't have the answer to is what is the delta difference? You know, if you come up with a high-quality natural grass field and compare it to an artificial turf field, how many days will you have lost, you know, due to rain, due to healing and repair versus the artificial turf, and I'm talking about the base case. You know, that is what we've used these fields for historically over the year, particularly pre-pandemic. Certainly, there's another case that we can talk about, the extended term, the longer time, and yes, we should be looking at that, but you know, what is the delta difference? Not with the current field, but let's talk about, you know, an improved natural grass field, how much time have we lost? What is the significance of that lost time? How important is it that we have these additional cancellations? Not what we've experienced, but hopefully what would be a better improved situation there. Next letter in SPEC is E. Everyone can guess that stands for environmental, and you know, I've seen a lot of material. I'm not going to get into technical arguments with my fellow aldermen. I'll leave that to the experts, but I've seen a lot of material about the concerns, starting with whether it's the recyclability, or the impact of air emissions, or the impact on groundwater, or the water flow and any contamination that that may have. You know, and it is important to our city, you know, and that comment is, I've heard many times from our citizens, you know, we are Lake Forest. You know, we're the city that, you know, the environmental protection is very important, environmental sustainability is very important. You know, how bad is the impact? And yes, can we monitor it? Can we, you know, make it better, remediate it? You know, I don't know, but those are the things that, you know, I think certainly I am struggling with, and I think many of our citizens are struggling with. And the last one is C, cost. What are the differences in cost? And, you know, we really haven't had, you know, an in-depth discussion like we do on many topics, particularly this magnitude, on the cost. Maybe it is we need more design work done to get a better handle, but to me, when we see a project that, you know, you're getting into 10 million, over $10 million, you know, is there a better way? Is there something you can do that gives you a better bang for the buck? We do need to be sensitive, it's going to hit the taxpayer ultimately, and whether it's through financing and bonds, what it does to our ability to proceed on other priority issues. Those are all very important questions, and we need to make sure that we put that equation into our judgment to weigh the different options here. But again, we need to do something.
Do you like the staff to respond?
I'm putting it out, I'd like to suggest...
Or have you decided that there's not a response?
No. I think there are a lot of responses, but you know, certainly I'm open to further discussion.
I think we ought to give the staff an opportunity to respond to at least the things that you've raised that they're prepared to respond to.
I was raising them as issues and questions we all should keep in mind as we go forward through this process, recognizing, you know, your earlier comments and my fellow aldermen's comments.
There's been a lot of work done on all those things, and I think the staff, I mean, we're here to ask questions of the staff and get clarity on some of these things, and you've...
Mr. Mayor, should we continue to make some comments and then, I think we all have questions, and then we can engage the staff in a number of questions?
Well, I mean, normally the process goes that we engage the staff in questions after they make a presentation.
This was more in response, like I say, to yours and to, and again, I don't mean to get into the merits, but rather, these are the issues that are out there, and I hear things, but I've also, you know, seen other things in terms of what the people are saying and, you know.
At some point, I think we should give the staff an opportunity to answer the questions. So anyway.
You're the chair, and by the way...
Well, we can save it for later, but we can, you know, and get back to it if people want to make general comments, but...
I thought this was a part where, you know, the aldermen have an opportunity.
Sure, well, I was wondering, I just wasn't sure if you wanted the staff to respond or not.
I'll be happy to work with staff and talk to staff about these issues and get their input.
Well, this should be done right here, right now. I mean, this is a public meeting for this discussion.
Well, I'd suggest we let the other aldermen know.
Well, I will, but I just want, I don't want to just throw up all these issues and then say, oh, we can't make a decision tonight because there are too many issues out there and that there's no opportunity for people to respond, so other questions or comments?
I think we should just go around the table.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Fine.
We'll start with the first word on the front. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Jed. I didn't prepare any formal comments tonight, but I do have some comments. First, I am absolutely sympathetic to you, Director Swarthout, and to your staff. I know, season after season, you know, in this climate, it is not easy to manage programming, outdoor programming. I am absolutely with everybody, Paul Best and the rest of Parks and Rec Board, that, and the rest, I know every city council member, we, there's no question of a doubt, it is time to make a change and to upgrade our outdoor athletic facilities. I'm also sympathetic to, you know, there are a number of young athletes, Lake Forest athletes here... athletes here, so I commend you for making the time to be here tonight to participate in this discussion. It's a very important one for you, probably more than anybody. So thank you for being here. I think that, you know, we are, we've talked about, this is absolutely extraordinary, exceptional place to live. We are Lake Forest. We absolutely, there's no reason why we should not have the best schools, the best facilities, the best programming. And for the most part, we really do. That's why we all chose to reside here and to raise our families here. So again, I'm very supportive of coming up with the best possible solution to ensure that we have the best facilities for the children we're raising in this community. You know, I would say with respect to being community, I, you know, there's obviously, there's tension. This is, for me, I'm coming up on the end of my first term. And this is the biggest issue that's come before our council. And clearly, there's, you know, there are people who are very much in favor of going in one direction. And there are a number of people who have raised questions and issues that we should be considering. I want to say and remind everybody that we are one community. We are all in agreement that we want to upgrade our athletic facilities. It's just a matter of how do we get there? And yeah, there's absolutely going to be some sort of a compromise somewhere because we have to address a number of issues that are real issues. They're not made up issues. These are important issues that affect our well-being, the well-being of our environment that we adore, and the well-being of our children who we adore. Lastly, I just want to say, you know, I do, like Alderman Bushman, you know, I've read a lot of emails, I've listened to a lot of voicemails, so I thank everybody who's taken the time to weigh in on this. I do have some questions that I'd like to pose to you and to your staff. I'm hoping that obviously you'll have some answers to those questions tonight. And in the event that those answers aren't readily available, then maybe we should take the time to explore them. I am, I think you were referring to me, right? Alderman Gashkarian, that I'm the one on council who has, I have raised and supported two college athletes. One is a freshman in college playing lacrosse. So were you saying that I've been deeply affected by the lack of regular usable fields?
I was actually referring to Alderman Weber, who I think is.
Oh, okay. So then, okay, so you didn't tell me. So anyway, I do have a, I have a daughter who's a college freshman playing lacrosse. And yes, you know, she started out here as a third grader. And yeah, I mean, there were fits and starts. And again, as a parent, I really get, when you're trying to introduce a child to a sport and especially a spring sport, and you can't have regular practices, you know, there's a potential they're going to lose interest in that and they're not going to be engaged. And that's really, really important. So, and we did, we, you know, she was on a private club team and we didn't play in Lake Forest, other than, of course, she played for the high school and she played at the West Campus on the turf. But we were all, you know, we were in Glenview, we were in Winnetka playing on turf fields. So I really do recognize the importance of having fields where they can constantly be engaged in their sport and becoming the best possible athlete that they can be to pursue whatever, you know, pursuits they have for their, for their sport. So, you know, if I have my lacrosse mom hat on, you know, I'm obviously thinking about it through, you know, one lens and through that perspective and, you know, absolutely. I'm sitting here today as a member of our city council. We all took an oath of office. I have fiduciary responsibilities like everybody else up here. And I have other concerns that I have to take in consideration. So I can't just look through it at this matter through just one, one lens. So I just, I just want to start with those and then, Jen, I'm going to turn it to you and then maybe we can all pose some questions.
Sure. Well, first, I want to thank everybody who took time to write me emails and letters and make phone calls. They were pretty equally divided, and I take more stock in those than maybe the social media comments that float around the community. But it was nice to get all of that engagement. And I agree, the fields need to be improved. I think that's pretty clear. I too have gone out to Lake Forest College, the Academy, and down to Winnetka High School. My friend Alderman Notes suggests I go down to Winnetka to look at the Nutria fields. And so this afternoon, my wife and I went down, Kate and I went down. As we were looking at the fields, I ran into the assistant athletic director from Nutria. Been there for 26 years and was the girls' soccer coach for all of that time. And so he walked us around, and they have five acres in the West Campus, and there's another six or seven acres over in Hibbard on the other side of 41. And it was very informative. But one thing we talked about was the issue of injuries, because that keeps coming up in a lot of the emails. And he said that it really wasn't an issue, and in fact, he thought that the turf was better because it was more solid and provided better footing for the, for the girls when they were playing and less slippage and less issues with falls and twist angles. So he thought that was a better solution. He also said that he's aware of a third generation of turf that's actually quite better from an environmental standpoint. Said there are lots of companies out there providing solutions, and he encourages us to make sure we look at all, as many of those as we can going forward. He said that the heat in their fields was an issue because of the crumbled rubber. He said that we should definitely, if we're going to do it, look at the walnut infill because it was, kept the fields cooler in hot days. So I also, he put me onto a study which I read this afternoon from the city of Toronto. It's really a very interesting, in-depth analysis of grass versus turf. It's probably 30 or 35 pages long and all kinds of attributes. But the net of it was that they came out saying that they preferred grass, but they felt that they had to do turf in high-activity areas because it just tore up the grass too much and the maintenance was much too high and they couldn't, couldn't really afford it in those high, high-intensity areas. So I thought that was, that was interesting. I prefer grass, but I also recognize the need for an all-weather playing service. I'm certainly concerned about plastic and the crumbled rubber. But I would agree to some turf fields. I just don't think 10 acres is a good idea. If I were to approve something, I'd want to see a smaller footprint for those fields. They're too expensive and it's too much for Lake Forest. So I think if we do anything with the design firm, we ask them to come up with some smaller footprint alternatives with better water drainage management. So all the water stays on our property and not going into the, into the ditch. And the other one is the Fourth of July. I would hate to see the Fourth of July, the decision about that drift out into the future. I think if we go ahead with the design, we should also have a proposed alternative for where Fourth of July would occur before we embark on this. So that, that could be a challenging discussion as well. So I'd like to see us come back to the engineering firm with a design for a smaller footprint. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Alderman Notes?
Alderman Gashkarian, I do take deference to our gray-haired status. Because in spite of that, we are all parents of active young children. Who, you know, grew up in a community that they were, the better part of their young lives were spent on those Deerfield fields and as a parent, sitting on the sidelines of those fields and getting kids to and from games and unfortunately firsthand experienced a lot of cancellations. You know, it's, the Notes family never had any pretense that we were raising Olympic athletes or college athletes. But the kids are excited to get out there and be involved in whatever the activity is that they're doing. As a parent, you're excited to go out and watch them. And the opportunity to maximize those opportunities for them to be out playing with their friends is invaluable. There is no one who would love to see grass as being the best alternative out there than me. I would love to see a viable grass alternative. But the fact of the matter is, artificial turf provides the depth of a season early and late. And again, if you're a parent, that not necessarily is a good thing, starting your season earlier in the spring or later in the fall. But I do see that being a really important integral part of this community and being able to service the needs of our children, as well as, you know, adult leagues who utilize those fields. I believe, you know, to Alderman Morris's point, we can be a leading-edge environmentally-conscious user of artificial turf fields. What is the best new product out there that is the most environmentally sensitive and lead the charge in that means? I do believe that we can find that solution and task staff through this process that we do that. I mean, that is of paramount importance. No one loses sight of the environmental impact that this field will have, and how do we absolutely do our best to minimize that impact? As Alderman Morris said, there's, the Fourth of July is also singularly the one event that probably brings together the most people in this community. It might be one day of a year, but you will not find a single event that brings together this community more than that. So it's important to me that whether that future is able to continue being at the Deerpath Fields or not, but understanding what that future is is certainly an important part of the discussion as well. The last thing I task is also maximizing availability and accessibility of the fields, that it's open to everybody whenever, that we're not fencing it in, precluding the community from having access to it. And, you know, again, if all things were equal and grass was a really, you know, dollar-for-dollar benefit, you know, that'd be one thing. But I do feel that the attributes of an artificial turf can unfortunately outweigh that, and we just now task ourselves with finding the most environmentally-conscious way of handling that. Thank you.
Alderman Rumel?
Thank you. You know, so I'm going to take your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to ask the staff a few questions. Sally's been standing up there. I guess my first question is, have we done a field in this, in our complex that maximizes And really is a state-of-the-art natural turf field? Have we ever done that?
No, we don't have one of those. We have not had the capital to be able to provide something of that.
That was what I thought the answer might be. And so that, that leaves me one, you know, with sort of an unanswered question of what could be accomplished with a state-of-the-art natural turf field? You know, should we have a goal perhaps of upgrading a lot of our natural fields in the community so that they drain better, so that they provide more playability? I don't think we, as Alderman Bushman said, I don't think we have an idea of how, how much a well-done natural turf field could increase our playability in the community because we haven't tried it. We haven't done it. I know we have an initiative coming up in Everett Park where we're going to try to do a natural turf field. So I'm very interested in what the result would be from that. Have we spoken to other entities within our community to see whether they have fields that might be available that we could utilize and add to our inventory of fields? You know, I posed you the question of whether we'd spoken to the school districts, for example. There are those fields out at 50 and Waukegan Road that I see all the time and I drive by them. And other than Sunday mornings for AYSO, I don't see them being utilized that much. You know, can we maybe partner with other entities in our community? After all, the taxpayer dollars come out of single pockets, whether it's the school district, the county, or the city. Have we thought about partnering with maybe some of the school districts to improve some of our playing fields? You know, I look at Woodlands and look at their soccer fields and wonder if those might be available to us so that we could have more rotation in our inventory so that we aren't over utilizing some of these fields constantly, is a thought that occurred to me. So have we done that?
So we do have a great working relationship with the high school. But unfortunately, their high-field usage time is at the same time as our high-field usage time, which is after school and on the weekends. And while you may only see AYSO out there on Sundays, those fields are being utilized by the high school teams at other times of the day and the week.
Apparently, some of these organizations are using the fields at the academy and they're finding time at the academy. I just got an email today saying that they had gone to the artificial turf fields at the academy.
Correct. They've gone to the artificial turf at the academy. And sometimes we hope, we have access occasionally to the artificial turf at the college. But it has to be in an extreme emergency because they, they are booked. They are utilized and booked.
You know, so again, you know, I just, I think I'm on this, sort of where Alderman Morris is coming out, that I have real concerns about the environmental impact of this. And I'm not sure we've explored all of the options. You know, I hear about increased use of pesticides and fertilizers, and I think that's a very real concern. But once again, we haven't tried an alternative of natural fertilizers. What can we achieve with that? You know, I hear about lawn maintenance equipment and the gas emissions, but I also think that we're moving toward electric or battery-powered lawn maintenance equipment at some point. So, you know, I have concerns about that. And no one, to my satisfaction, has answered what happens at the end of the useful life of these fields and where they go. And, you know, I've heard, oh, we're going to recycle them maybe, but apparently that hasn't happened. But, you know, I was given an assignment by Mayor Pandeleon in 2020 to be the chairman of the Environmental Sustainability Committee. But let me assure you that I am also the alderman for the second ward and the alderman for all of the residents of Lake Forest and taking that into consideration in my decisions and in my comments tonight. And I also looked at the demographics of Lake Forest when I wanted to know, who am I representing? And interestingly, I found that 25% of our population is under the age of 65, which means to me that they're living on fixed incomes. You know, for what it's worth, 21% of our population is under the age of 18. So, you know, we're asking for the taxpayers of Lake Forest to carry a pretty heavy financial burden for this. And that concerns me. You know, I went back and trying to do this, I looked at our decision-making parameters, which often I just scroll through. But for some reason, it caught my attention. I thought maybe, maybe there's a reason for that. And when I looked at it, it said, motions and votes shall comprise what is in the best long-term interests of all Lake Forest residents, measured in decades, being mindful of proven precedents and new precedents that may be created. And then I, you know, I asked you and I asked Elizabeth Hollob, what major capital improvement projects have we funded in the last 15 to 10, 15, even 30 years? And most of them tended to be large capital improvement projects like sewer projects, the new water treatment plant that benefited all Lake Forest residents. Then I said, what have we gone to referendum for in the past? And again, those tended to be capital improvement projects. There was a referendum on whether we should be home rule. There was a referendum on the real estate transfer tax. This is an incredibly unique situation that we're being asked to decide on tonight. This is an incredibly unique situation that we're being asked to decide on tonight. And I just want to be sure that we have given all options of thorough airing. And I am concerned about what it does to us fiscally, about what kind of tax burden we are putting on our residents. And I don't know if Elizabeth's prepared to talk about some of that tonight, but I know she's worked out some figures and I'd love to see some of those and I'd love our residents to see some of those. Would that be appropriate?
Sure. It was in our package. I think the total was, you know, $100 per household.
Yeah, and I guess I would say at this point, Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, because you've made it sufficiently through the dais here.
Yeah, let's keep going.
Perhaps you want to finish the concluding comments and then
Yeah.
Come back for questions for staff. We'd be happy to entertain them then.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. You know, that's, but that's just for this project. And so, you know, as we go through the years, are there other capital improvement projects that may require bonding, that may add to the tax burden of our residents? And those are issues that concern me very much. And we're in tough fiscal times right now. We're looking at, what, 17% inflation possibly this year?
Are you implying that we're not in good financial condition right now?
We're not, yeah, we're not in tough fiscal times. Not in this town.
That's not a fair statement.
Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, Alderman. Thank you very much. I'm implying that I believe residents are under some fiscal pressures right now, and I'm not sure that this is a good time to be adding to their tax burden. I am not implying that the city of Lake Forest is in a bad financial condition, but I do think we have some uncertain financial pressures on each of our residents. We have a silent tax of inflation in front of us right now, and so that does concern me. So I guess my final conclusion is I do have environmental concerns. I do have health and safety concerns from some of the letters that I've seen, especially with this young demographic. And I just think this is too big a project for a community of our size. And I think that perhaps this could be phased in, perhaps we could do a modified approach to it, and perhaps we could do, as Alderman Morris suggested, some type of hybrid version of what's been proposed. So I would scale it back, look carefully at the burden of our taxpayers and what we're asking of them. So I still have a lot of questions and I'm not really sure that I'm ready to vote on this tonight. I would like to maybe have some more forums on it, really understand the economic impact of it. And, you know, there's always the possibility of going to referendum. The last time we had an issue like this was the beach project in the 80s, and we did go to referendum on that. Now, I understand that we had to because we weren't home rule, but, you know, nonetheless, there is, you know, let's really hear from the residents maybe on this and see what their opinions are. I just think it's a little maybe presumptuous for the nine of us to sit up here and make this decision that's going to have a true impact on the taxes, the real estate taxes of our residents.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hey Sally. You know, let's respond to the last comment. I mean, you know, so making this decision is what we signed up for as Aldermen in our community. I mean, that's the reason why we're here and we're getting paid the big bucks. You know, we, this process has gone through, I mean, the master plan was initiated four years ago. There's been countless community engagement. If you don't have data to make a decision tonight, ask the question. All right, now, so it's, if you're in business or you're making a strategic decision, you got to evaluate the criteria, you got to evaluate options, you got to make sure you have the data on the options, and you ask the questions to understand the process. So that's what I'm going to do with you. I think the first one we can all agree is playability. So when the Parks and Rec Board went through the process to evaluate the option, how did they quantify that variable, playability? You know, that gets to a couple of things. One, like, how many youth sports participants do we have? How many days a year? And that cancellation rate knocks out a bunch. But if you went to synthetic and you extended the season and you reduce the cancellations, there's a significant pickup. And I think that's the most salient point. So I'm curious how that was discussed because there's lots of smart people on that board, spent a lot of time thinking about it. And all the workshops I saw, I listened to, I watched everything. I see the status of the current fields, major pickup on today. The other question I have on that issue is around 20 years ago, we, as a city, we put a lot of money in those fields. They were brand-new at some point behind Deer Path. They were brand-new. Now, they didn't have state-of-the-art bears drainage, but they were brand-new. And the reason why they atrophied is because the operating cost was too high and the playability solution was never solved. So I think the definition of insanity is almost to try to do the same thing twice and have a different outcome. And so I really think that's a case study. I was surprised when you said we haven't done it. We spent a fair amount of money on that, on that field, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of use there and it was brand-new. But on the first point on playability, if you could just address that in terms of how the Parks and Rec Board thought about it when they were evaluating the options.
So Parks and Rec Board saw numbers of our participants, our affiliates of participants, how many people are on those fields on any given day or within any of our parks on any given day. We also have 600-plus families, students at the middle school. So we looked at all of those numbers to see what we would need. Now, our numbers are outdated because lacrosse has seen a 42% increase. Lacrosse, I'm sure soccer has seen an increase. Our football program was hu, especially flag football, huge last year. So we're growing. So I don't know that I have the current updated numbers because this is the first I'm hearing of the 42% increase for lacrosse. But we did weigh the numbers that we had on hand and made, and, you know, how do you, looked at how do we get them equal opportunity on fields that don't necessarily have opportunity to play? You know, the shoulder seasons, spring and fall, those are the hardest hit by weather. And when they looked at that, synthetic turf pushes us. On a warm day in February, you can be on the field. On the warm day in December, you can be in the field. On a moderately warm day in January, if there's not a lot of snow, you can be on the field. So they looked at those opportunities. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so I mean, it's significant, I mean, in terms of the playability increase, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, if you're evaluating the options strategically, you know, is 20%, 30% uptick on current playability or more reasonable? I mean, it seems like to me, but I want to understand how the, how the board tried to quantify that to say, you know, that's, that's a better option on that variable. Is that kind of, you know, the general sense?
Yes.
Or was it 80%? Or, it's not like it was 5% more than the state-of-the-art grass field because of the extension of the seasons and the possible rainout and other things that happen, no matter how much money we put into it.
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
That is fair.
Okay. How about on injury risk? What was the conversation? Because we all care about our children and the youth, and I think the only thing that parents with sports families care more about than sports are their kids, right? So, so there's no one that's going to want their kids to get hurt or take on a disproportionate risk because a lot of these sports are just risky inherently. So I'm just kind of curious how, how the, how the board thought of that variable and factored that in on the safety front.
So the board heard information through, via the survey, about the injuries from our neighboring communities, as well as from the high school and the college, and that they had not seen an uptick in the injuries. We also pointed out that our participants are of a lighter weight class than a pro football player or even a college athlete, so it's not going to have the same impact as it would on a bigger body.
Okay. And then how about on the environmental front? I know that on the replacement side, I heard a statistic that said the 10-year replacement, although we're going to fund it through revenue, would factor in an incremental week supply of tonnage from our community. So instead of 52 weeks' supply, we'd have 53 every 10 years. Is that, is that, is that a true statement? Is that?
That is a true statement. We took that from the tonnage that we already produce, and then we utilized Gee Walt Hamilton, who helped us with the schematic design, to calculate what the tonnage would be for the removal of the carpet, and that is what we came up with.
Okay. And how about the other environmental impacts on both options? I mean, what was the conversation and how did it net out? Was it materially more favorable for one or the other, or what was the?
Well, we vetted, we vetted, obviously, the synthetic issues on both sides. The PFOS from a carpet, as well as the synthetic pesticides and fertilizer. They also weighed in the gas emissions from taking care of a natural grass and what that would produce. One of our park board members mentioned how many asphalt tennis courts we have in this community and how often we replace them. So all those things were measured in their discussion at the park board meeting.
And on the cost side, how conservative were you on, on the revenue for the playability and rental to other communities or people coming in? Was that a conservative estimate?
Very conservative and based on some numbers that I heard today that some of our folks here in this community are charging, it was extremely conservative.
Okay, so right now it's a, it's a $250,000 a year for 10 years and that goes into an escrow account or a fund?
Right.
And that would pay the million, or the two and a half million to replace. So what was, how did, I guess, the team think about the ceiling on that in terms of?
So when we went in with our conservative, we went in with a range, a very low range. And Joe, if you want to step up and, Joe actually did the numbers, so I'm going to let him explain them for you.
Thank you, Seth. So those, those numbers were actually looking at program time of Deer Path Park with a possibility of synthetic turf, having four fields outside of Recreation Department program usage. So from a 7:00 PM to a 10:00 PM, four days a week, times four fields, and then looking at the weekends, looking at Saturday, we're usually done between 2:00 and 3:00, so from 3:00 to 10:00, and then all day Sunday, we have nothing. So looking at the 50, I think it was a $50 an hour rate, or I think we gave you a range of 25 or 50, that's how those numbers were arrived at. So using the, you know, now that's not saying that, looking in the future, that maybe our programs only use two baseball fields and the other half of the park is available so that would open up some additional program time. So, yeah, they're very conservative. I mean, they were at a very low end because we also want to take into consideration the users of the park are also Lake Forest organizations. And so, you know, we've got to be very considerate when we're looking at what fee would be appropriate to charge versus a outside organization possibly that's looking for a field. So, but that's how they were derived and very, very conservative.
And so what was the percent of the utilization assumed for that available time? Was it, was it a small amount, so you could ratchet it up and make more, or what was the?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the times remain the same from three, you know, and when we're through and we raise the fee, that will go up quite a bit depending on what your fee is going to be. And hearing what some of the other, or other, the schools charge in the area for a turf field, we were on the very low end with a $50 rate. Now, you know, we didn't look into availability during like the 3:00 to 7:00 or the 4:00 to 7:00 when our programs are there in the fall. With football being so big, that's going to be a harder time slot. But in the spring with baseball, there might be additional hours. That will vary depending on registration. And as, you know, Director Swartham mentioned, we are seeing our program growth as well as the lacrosse's and the other organizations in town. We're seeing, you know, more baseball players, we're seeing more football players, more basketball players. So I think we're seeing that influx of new members moving into the community with the children who want to participate. So we're starting to see that growth, which, you know, who knows how that's going to affect? But our plan is, you know, hopefully through the process, we will be able to come up with more accurate numbers based on real-time, you know, numbers and be able to answer a lot of those questions more clearly.
Thank you. And last question, who was the one dissenter on the park board and what was their rationale and how much debate was there between the five-to-one vote?
Kevin Carden was the dissenter, and he just truly felt that natural field, natural turf was the better choice. As you have gone through your group with your comments, the park board was also allowed to do that after their time for questions. There was opportunity for those conversations to have, the back and forth to happen, and then they moved to the vote. But each, each board member was allowed to give their thoughts, just as you have.
I think, I listened to that reporting as well, and I think he was also concerned about the financial.
Yes, he was concerned about financial. You are correct, Alderman.
Right. I think he was concerned too.
Excuse me, I'm still, I'm still asking questions.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
So on the financial point, what were the pros and cons of the options at the team level in terms of, was it a net wash and playability was so different that the financial factor didn't really come into play? So if we were going to do something, it didn't matter which option, it's a big chunk of money, right? So I'm just kind of curious how that played into evaluating the options.
For the park board?
Yeah, the park board. You know, you're going through option two, you're going through option three, and, you know, this is a big capital project. It's a big number, but we have a big problem around playability and use. And so option two and three, is it a wash on the cost or the financial perspective when the board talked about it?
It is not a wash. It's very close. They're very close in cost. But the Park and Recreation Board is an advisory board and they don't really discuss the financials. They saw a very hot, even higher level than what you have seen tonight because that is not their purview.
All right, thanks. I have no more questions, but of course I'll reserve comments for later.
Alderman Weber?
Last but not least.
Sorry, sorry for the delay here.
So first, I just want to thank everyone for being here. It's great to see our future leaders, the children of all ages who participate. I was here last Thursday with some Weebalos talking about city government, and I love seeing our youth get involved. I'm taking this from an eagle-eye view. Last fall, my now seven-year-old and I were out in the fields for the first time, even though being a lifelong resident, I had never played myself. I rode horses, I played golf. So two sports that utilize a lot of natural grass. But we were out there last fall, and when this issue came up to the council level at a workshop, I literally had been standing out with, in the mud with my family, in no bathroom nearby with my two-year-old that needed to go more potty training. And I thought, oh, my goodness, you know, this is so great that this is coming forth. How timely. We have all this great community who, all these children out there playing, and how can we make this better? But with that, I also have my background in horticulture and turf management, and I'm a member of a garden club, and I sit out in the ESC, and flowers and natural growing organically and vegetables are all very important to me. But the real issue at hand is what, most recently Alderman Prashlek has reminded all of us, is the playability and how do we extend that? So when I focus my thoughts and deliberations among all of the very thoughtful and passionate residents that have reached out to me, both by email, by phone, stopping by, being here tonight, and participating through this entire process, it comes down to a couple of things. First is, off the bat, careful application of chemicals, fertilizer, fungicides, pesticides, insecticides. All of that comes into play when you're maintaining something at a high level, whether it's a golf course, at any of our private clubs. And when you're looking at footing, even for horses in a ring, there's a level component of rubber that's used. So whether it's a broken-up or a rubber matting of some sort, and those are the two sports that I'm personally most familiar with. So there are elements that are challenging to a more organic or natural approach to our environment. When I look at the number of parks we have and the number of fields we have, I think overall, maybe a future goal would be, how do we maintain these all at a higher level? Can we afford to do that? Because I think that, that's something to look forward and strive to. I do think it's important to have a choice. If the artificial or synthetic or however we want to call this. If the, the artificial or synthetic, or however we want to call this carpet of turf gives us a choice, I think that's important. And I think the, the revenue and the schematics that have been run to help pay for that in the future is important too. This project also has talked about some other elements which really aren't, haven't really been discussed too much. And one is the bathroom situation. So I just want to pull that out because that really was one of the most important things to me. Whatever we do, we need a bathroom. And this is catering to our fam, this is families out there. People are literally, you've got like four, six kids. They're out on the field. You've got little ones and they're out there with their chairs and their Ravinia tables and the food, they're little feeding dinner. I thought, wow, this is, this is new, something new is experiencing. And that's, and just to me, an important amenity. So maybe concession stand or not, patio or not, but what we're being asked to do is to approve a recommendation for an engineering and design study. And I think the engineering and design study will give us that answer in terms of the financials of how deep into these extra amenities we need. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, based on questions and comments and things you'd like the staff to respond to? I mean, I think there were some questions from Alderman.
I have a couple. Go ahead. Debt capacity, bond capacity. I'd like for that to be addressed specifically. I'd also like Director Swarthout to indicate whether or not the original schematic design was using crumb rubber. And then the third question is, will there be an effort to assure that the Fourth of July will be held in some level? Obviously not during construction here.
So I will take your two questions for me. The schematic design, when contracted with Gee Walt, there was very specific that it would not be black crumb rubber. We would be looking more towards natural infill, such as the cork or the olive pit. So that was taken into consideration. Did we look at any other form of rubber?
So through, through the entire schematic design process, working with Gee Walt Hamilton, we were upfront with, we did not want to use the crumb rubber. And so we talked about all these different, you know, whether it's olive pits, walnut shells, pine trees, it's called Eco-Fill, which is a sand that's got a coating on it. Yes, we've talked to them about all of these other options. And I believe that was taken into consideration in the, in the pricing of their design. Because they knew that we were not interested at that point, that crumb rubber wouldn't necessarily be an option.
And in your response to the Fourth of July? The Fourth of July is important to the entire community, including the recreation staff and the Friends of Parks Foundation. That is an event we are not going to let fall through the loophole. We certainly will look at all the options to hold that event and do it as well as we have done it for the past 15, 16 years and moving forward into the future. It is not something we want to lose. I want to remind you folks that the Fourth of July event used to take place on the east side of Deer Path Middle School, on the other side of the road, of Hastings Road. And at some point, that event was going to fall away. And the friends stepped up because it was important to the community and they will continue to step up to ensure that we have the event.
Sally, before you go away, if I may, that $250,000 a year that we're estimating in rental fees, is that accurate? Does that, is that from like the lacrosse association, the soccer people? Or is that from people leasing these for tournaments?
So any tournament play would be monitored by staff. That is not the intention for these fields. The intention is for Lake Forest resident users, so our affiliations, our own programming. There are some leagues in this town that are not, that may have a higher percentage of Lake Forest residents, but they're not necessarily a Lake Forest team that we would rent to. As tournaments go, each one would be taken at a time. We host our own tournaments, like lacrosse hosts their tournaments. We do one of the biggest baseball tournaments in the region in May. And we host it at almost every park in town, including Deer Path. And it has not really put any kind of pressure on the city or parking. Most people don't even know what's going on. So I would say that our main users would be Lake Forest residents and tournaments would be really through an affiliation of our own or one of our own tournaments at this point.
So, but these baseball tournaments, you used a number of different locations and fields in town for those?
We do, and we would have to continue to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Oh, sorry. We got, we got, right.
Sorry, for the benefit of the audience, my name's Elizabeth Hollob. I'm the finance director for the city. And I will start at a high level and I'm happy to drill down to the extent you'd like to this evening. We understand you're not deciding how to finance this project this evening. But each step you take towards a, a project that could be eight to 11 million dollars is significant. And so we have done some preliminary work on the financial side of things. So they have an idea of, of what we know and what we don't yet know. The slide here in Sally's presentation was a very high-level summary of natural and synthetic options over differing periods of time. And these costs included the one-time capital costs for the improvements under both options, as well as the operating costs each year to maintain the fields in their form. That was the final outcome. As well as the replacement of the synthetic turf, currently estimated at every 10 years. We started out with cost estimates developed by Gee Walt Hamilton as part of the schematic design process that ran from July to October of last year. In those cost estimates, Gee Walt Hamilton included a 10% contingency. They also included a 12% inflation factor. They were using 2021 cost estimates with the understanding that the project would likely not proceed for two to three years. So that 12% was intended to ensure that that potential inflation cost in the project was included in the original estimates. We've also looked at two different financing options. Typically with a capital project of this magnitude, the city would bond finance that. You would issue general obligation bonds, pay debt service over a period of time. We have typically tried to pay our debt off on a quicker basis because of the city's AAA bond rating that is favorable to Moody's and other credit rating agencies to pay off debt on a faster timeframe. But given the magnitude of this project, we looked at both a 10-year financing option and a 15-year financing option. Either of those would be perfectly acceptable in the markets given the estimated useful life of the project. So we looked at the upfront estimated cost of eight to 11 million dollars being financed over either 10 or 15 years. And that what, that is what you see reflected in this chart. So as you go from the left to the right, you see the first column being the 10-year total cost of the one-time capital operating for each year and the synthetic turf replacement in year 10, under this scenario for the synthetic option. And then as we moved right, we used longer total costs using 15, 20, and 25 years with either 10 or 15-year financing. And what we found is that over time, the natural and synthetic options were fairly close when looking at the total costs over different periods of time. I would note that we did not anticipate a hybrid option when we did schematic design last year. So we do not have cost estimates for the hybrid option. The next slide takes this a little bit more granular. This chart looks each year, so year one through year 25, the cumulative costs, including the one-time capital, the operating, and the every 10-year synthetic turf replacement. In this chart, you can see we've used the 15-year financing option. And we show the total cost, if Blake can still hear me, the total cumulative costs in each year. And so what you can see with the natural versus synthetic options is that as you get closer to each 10th year, when you would replace synthetic turf, the total costs of the two options get closer together. And then each 10th year, there would be a capital cost to replace that synthetic turf, widening the gap between the natural and synthetic options. And then you see again, they start getting closer together until year 20. So that would just show you generally over time how the two options would compare from a total cost impact. And then of course, in the 15th year, we would have paid off the bonds. And so we would only have operating costs going forward and then synthetic turf replacement as needed. And then up at the right, I just included the, the high-level impact to an average household. We looked at, again, both 10 and 15-year options for both natural and synthetic turf. Using the 15-year financing option with an estimated cost of financing, which we would not know that's probably going to be at least a year away to bond. But using a conservative interest rate assumption on an $800,000 home, which is an average household, which is what we used as a household impact on the tax levy. The natural option would generate an additional tax levy of $75. And the synthetic option, $102. So about a $32 difference, $27 difference on the initial impact of the debt service for the eight to 11 million dollar capital cost. So I will pause there and see if you want me to go down any further or if that addresses the financing questions.
Just one more question. And I am so sorry to, to control the time. And first off, I want to apologize to my friend and colleague, Alderman Brumel, for interrupting you. It was rude. I apologize.
Thank you.
More importantly, can you put it in historical perspective for us? The Beach Project, I think it was completed in 84 or 85. Can you compare bond rates now versus what they were then? And can you tell me what our bond rating status is now compared to what it was then? Give us a little perspective.
Sure. So I was asked to provide some information on previous significant capital projects that the city has had. In fiscal year 2005, the city completed a $24.6 million project at the water plant. That was funded with a $26 million general obligation bond issue. I do not have the interest rate, but I can tell you the interest rate was higher in 2005 than it, than it has been recently. Of course, we recognize too that interest rates are, are on the up, uprise, but they are very low still. In fiscal year 2010, so that would have been about 12 years ago, the city completed the municipal services facility. And that was a $23.4 million project. That was funded in large part with general obligation bond issues in 2008 and 2010. And those arguably were also in a high-interest rate environment because it was right after the recession. So we did see higher interest rates at that time. And then of course, the most recent is in fiscal year 19, so about three years ago. We issued bonds to finance the $11 million improvement project to the water treatment plant. That was funded partially by Water Fund Reserves, but in large part by a $9.3 million general obligation bond issue. We issued those in 2017, received a very low interest rate, given good bond market conditions at that time. Of course, you've been part of refinancings of bonds that we did in both 2019 and 2021, which refinanced higher interest rate debt at a lower interest rate, similar to refinancing your mortgage, taking advantage of very low interest rates, taking the outstanding debt that we could and refinancing at a lower interest rate with a significant savings to Lake Forest property taxpayers. So we did, we did refinance all of the municipal services facility bonds that were issued in 2010. Those were part of the refinancings and so we were able to shed those higher interest rates.
Yeah, and just to follow up to that on, on the bonding capacity. We, we don't spend a lot of time on the council on our balance sheet typically. We have over periods of time, certainly on, on the refis that we've done. But, and we also pride ourselves on the lowest taxes in Lake County and, you know, providing, you know, bang for your buck. I mean, if you, if you gave the average person the memo that they're going to get state-of-the-art synthetic fields for 100 bucks a year, I mean, in a referendum, they'd probably sign up for it, you know? So I'm just kind of curious though on how you think about the balance sheet and our, and our debt service capacity on this chart. There's a lot of colors and all that, but if you just, you can just give us the big picture.
And I will try to give you the big picture. So really what you're looking at in this chart is the red, the amounts in red by levy year. So we go back to levy year 2008. And you can see that most of our property tax-supported capital improvements were financed by debt. In fact, we did not have a capital fund tax levy until you see the blue in 2015. For those who are on the council, that is when we paid off the 2008 outstanding bonds and in turn created a new capital levy of the same amount of debt service in order to provide a perpetuity advantage to pay-as-you-go financing. So that is when we introduced the concept of tax levy dollars going directly into fund on an annual basis, the five-year capital improvement program. And so we began a combination of pay-as-you-go financing and debt financing since that time period. So the blue is reflecting the tax dollars in that given year that can go right into a capital project. The red is the tax levy dollars that is paying debt that we issued previously for particular improvements. The blue line that you see going up and then leveling off, that is the city council's self-imposed limit on tax levy dollars used for capital improvements. And so we look at that in combination because we say regardless of whether we debt finance or we pay as you go, we're going to combine those two levy line items and stay within that cap. That line is, started out with the 2004 debt service levy. And then we increase it each year by the municipal price index, which is a measure of the cost of inflation for capital improvements in the state of Illinois. And that is issued in part by the Illinois Municipal League in conjunction with, with Northern Illinois University. And so we add, we add that inflation factor each year. We make no forecasts on the future increases of the MPI. We simply level that off, recognizing that it's going to increase each year, but not making a forecast. So the difference between the top of the blue and the light blue line is your additional capacity beyond what we're already factoring in as pay-as-you-go financing. Now, of course, the city council would also have the option to reduce the blue amount in future years and increase the red. So it's really just a balancing and it's really the city council's decision to whether, on whether we finance through bond or pay-as-you-go. Pay-as-you-go really only works with the annual capital improvements, the street resurfacing, the types of improvements that we do each year that is really more like maintenance than building a building. And so that probably is more than you wanted to know, but hopefully it answered the question you were asking about capacity.
Yeah, and there's also, I mean, I just, I guess the market has something to say too about the bond market and the external view of our, of our town. And there's a lot of people in our town in the fixed income bond market space. But, you know, can you just talk, can you touch on AAA bonding? How the market views us and what, you know, the market capacity is versus the self-imposed to maintain, you know, the AAA and us in good standing? good standing?
Sure, absolutely. When the city, like any other governmental entity, goes out to the bond market to finance, there are independent bond credit rating agencies who review the debt, and they provide a signal to the market of the safety and security with which they believe future bondholders might take. And so the higher the credit rating issued by one of those independent credit rating agencies, the lower interest rate you will pay because it's considered safer debt. Hear a lot about Illinois' bond rating, and it's the worst in the nation. But the city holds a AAA bond rating, which is the highest bond rating a government issuer can have, and that's through Moody's Investor Service. The city has held a AAA rating since 1987, which means that the city can borrow at a lower interest rate than those who might have a lower credit rating. So the city does benefit significantly from that AAA rating. Typically, bonds issued are very competitive. We typically see nine, 11 different investors attempting to buy those bonds when we issue debt. So it's very competitive and at a low interest rate because of the credit rating.
And I'm just, one additional financial note, and I know we're not tasked with solving the financial equation in its entirety tonight, but you may recall in the initial pre-designed schematic work for both the synthetic turf and the natural option that there were cost considerations included for multiple amenities. I know you referenced them, Alderman, Weber, whether there'd be multiple bathrooms, patios, concession stands, storage, et cetera. And so just a reminder to the council that, you know, come fall, irrespective of what playing surface may be identified as the preferred option of the council, you'll have the ability, when we have more refined cost estimates through the design work, to, you know, value engineer, near out some of those additional components, depending on your financial appetite. Perhaps consider whether some of those should be pursued through private philanthropic efforts, et cetera. So there are opportunities to consider ways to bring project costs down. Again, we don't have firm numbers on those. That's why we go through, you know, a more detailed and comprehensive engineering design process. But just a reminder to the council and the public that there were several million dollars included in those initial estimates that are sort of separate and apart from the actual playing fields themselves.
Alderman.
Dr. Hollab, one thing that Alderman touched on that I'm not sure you followed up on yourself was, based on our last rating from Moody's, the capacity to absorb additional debt and preserve our AAA bonding bond rating. Can you speak to that capacity?
Excellent point. Thank you for that clarification. As part of the metrics, credit rating looks at is typically comparables with other issuers. They look at the load of tax-supported debt compared to per capita comparisons with others. They look at it as a percentage of the total property value within the city as another metric to ensure that the capacity is there for repayment of the debt going forward. And so on that previous chart where we saw the introduction of the blue, which is pay-as-you-go financing, you can see that our total capital spend has become increasingly less debt-financed and more pay-as-you-go, which has also widened that gap because we're relying less on debt for our capital improvements. And that is favorable to a credit rating agency as well because moving from pay-as-you-go to debt doesn't have an effect on the overall tax levy if it's the same dollars just financed a different way.
So just to clarify, I think what you said was there's a fairly large amount of capacity.
Yes, there's capacity both within a credit rating perspective, but also within the city council's policy.
Right, okay.
So.
Great, thank you.
So just to be clear, with this $102 on every taxpayer to finance this, this is in year one, right, and going forward? And that would be in addition to whatever increase we have in general on tax increase. And we don't have projections yet as to what that might look like. For example, for next year, much of that would depend on our cost of living increase, correct? But it wouldn't be more than 5%, assuming that we don't go beyond the tax cap, which we aren't bound to because we're home rule anyway, right?
Right. You do try within certain exceptions, you try to remain within the tax cap each year, even though you're not legally required to as a home rule unit of government. But yes, you are right, Alderman Rummel, those impacts are to, as a percent of the 21 levy which you approved in December, and it is for this project only. So you're just seeing the incremental increase in the levy for this project of somewhere between eight and 11, based on our current projections. I would note, however, we do level debt service, which means that you're only going to see that $102 or $75, whatever it is, the first year. And it's going to be level from that standpoint. So it's not 102 each year. It's 102 the first year, and then that stays level through the 10- or 15-year financing period.
And then my other question is, because we've heard about other capital needs potentially in our city. We have sewer projects. We have potentially a need at the library. So if we wanted, for example, to improve the library and go to a bond issue, that would be another additional cost, right? Another bond that we would be issuing on top of this to move forward with a library project potentially.
Correct. And we did have those discussions when that, a year and a half was... The library does not have the authority to issue debt itself. The city has to do it on its behalf and include it on the tax levy for the library.
And other capital improvement projects that may come up, if we didn't have the capacity to pay from our current revenues, we'd be going to a bond for some of those as well.
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Bushman.
I think Alderman Rummel covered the last point as to whether anything else was on the horizon that may influence the bond capacity of the city. Anything else you had to add to that?
So nothing within the five-year capital improvement program that you reviewed in November and will be part of your budget document on April 18th. Nothing within that five-year capital improvement program anticipates a need for bond financing.
Could you go back to your second or third slide that showed the two components and the increased cost going up? And maybe not understanding it, and this is fine. My understanding is if we're talking about natural turf, you have a major expense at the front end. Whereas in terms of talking about the natural grass, the expense is more maintenance that's over the course of whether it's 10, 20, or 30 years. Do these charts reflect the timing of incurring of those costs?
It does. So the natural and synthetic assumptions for the one-time costs initially, the eight versus the 11 million, both assume financing over 15 years in this chart.
Okay, so this is a financing chart, not incurring the cost chart. In other words, that first year, if you're paying $10 million to put in an artificial turf, I don't see that in year one here.
This is based on when the outlay of dollars would be required by the city. So 115...
Based upon a financing mode?
Over 15. So we would bond, we would borrow that $8 million and pay the project, but we would pay it back over 15 years. So this reflects the payment schedule of the bonds, not the actual outlay of cash, if you will.
That explains why I wasn't seeing the big hit and then the other catching up that way.
Right. And the reason why they get closer together before each 10-year synthetic turf replacement potential year is that the ongoing cost of the natural option is higher than the synthetic from an operating budget standpoint, which gets them closer together. And then each 10th year, you have the additional cost to replace the turf.
Although being where the artificial turf capital cost is at the initial first year, the financing cost for there is going to be greater than financing where it's spread out over 10 years through maintenance costs.
Potentially, but in this chart, we've only assumed financing the one-time costs. We've assumed we will absorb the operating impact and put money in a sinking fund to replace the turf. So we've only assumed we need to finance the initial one-time cost.
If we're talking about, let's say, a maintenance cost of a half a million a year over 10 years, are you financing that full 10 years starting in year one?
No. On this chart, we're showing that in each year.
Okay, you are incrementing it.
Mm-hmm.
Did have another question, but I forgot now, so thank you very much.
Dr. Hollab, a question about the financing projections. If we have to replace synthetic turf more frequently, say every eight years, how does that affect this projection?
So that would, in theory, move the investment for the replacement from year 10 to year eight. It would affect the projections, but I would note that what we've assumed in our preliminary financials is that revenue generated from the fields will be set aside to accumulate money for the replacement. So that's kind of the model that we've considered under the synthetic option, not that the council may decide differently, but at least in our preliminary projections, that's the assumption we've made.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, much of this assumes, though, that we get $250,000 of revenue.
No, the $250,000 was new for me. I didn't realize we had done that assessment. We did not in this forecast revenue included. We just looked at this from a cost standpoint.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, where the $250,000 number, maybe Joe could answer that, really came from. I mean...
I think he mentioned it was from available time to rent the fields out and the potential revenue based on comparable communities and what they were getting for their rental fees.
So they're getting $250,000 a year from their rental income?
See, I can't comment on what others are getting because I don't know their fees that they're charging. I know they're a lot higher than the $50 an hour that we used for our exercise to just show a possible revenue generation for the use in a year. So I can't tell you what, you know, Lake Forest Academy or Winnetco or anybody else is bringing in revenue. But I know that it was based on the usage or the open time slot based on a $50 number of the open hours, times that, times the number of fields, got us to that number. So it was very, like I said, it was very conservative just to show that there is ability to raise some revenue through the turf.
Alderman Rummel, you bring up a good point, but I want to speak to the credit of the park. I had reached out to some outside users, and it's my understanding, per field, per hour, that the rates vary between $119 an hour to $179 an hour with lights. So I think that, as is typical with the city of Lake Forest, we approach our financial decisions from a very conservative perspective. And I actually appreciate that more conservative look, but getting maybe more realistic look, I think, Malon, your point is very important. We have to make sure that, you know, we're not going to get into something that we can't take care of or sustain or maintain. So if we're to look at what it probably will generate, it will be higher. I don't know that we should charge what the market is charging. And certainly, we're going to have, we should have different entities, and I would leave it to the staff and the park board to determine what those costs should be. But it seems like I have every confidence that our numbers are taking an extremely conservative approach, and that's part of my comfort level with what we're looking at.
Other questions from the council before we take public comment?
I have a couple of questions for Sally. Sorry, Sally.
We should have put a chair there for you.
What if there do have been a stool?
These are things that I really would love to understand, and, you know, if you can answer them now, great. Otherwise, whenever you can. So there seems, in the materials that I've read, that there's some discrepancy with respect to the data on injuries. And, you know, not turf versus natural grass, but that the amount of increase of, you know, I guess, again, I've seen, I've seen, and I was reading, I don't know, some, maybe it was a college football data, that there really isn't a significant difference if you compare turf to natural turf. But then I've also seen that there is a significant increase in concussions, especially among, you know, younger athletes whose bodies are just not as strong. So, and then I read somewhere, I think it was Dr. Hamming's letter, that there was a 58% increase, high school data suggests a 58% increase in injury on turf. So I just, the discrepancy was curious to me. Could you address that?
So I think that you're going to find that discrepancy no matter where you look. You can Google anything and get the perceived answer that you want because there really isn't solid data, if that helps.
Okay. I'm also, I've read a lot about...
Could I just expand on that point before you leave it?
Okay. Okay. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
And, you know, the council received a letter dated March 21, 2022, from the Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. And they addressed the issue of safety and health, and they clearly come out and say that they strongly discourage the installation of artificial turf, playing surface and fields due to the uncertainty surrounding the safety. And they talk about the concerns in ingestion, absorption, extreme heat, and all these other factors. Have you seen that document?
If I've seen it, I don't know that I've seen that document. I have been in and out of office.
Yeah, right. I recognize it's hard to keep up.
And not all documents come to me. They sometimes just go straight to council.
It's something that...
I have.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I'm sure we all have, and it's a question of, you know, trying to answer the question, what are the safety concerns? How real are they? And yes, there is a difference of opinion. I think we all can agree on that. But where do we look for the most authoritative answers to the question? And that's where I get a little concerned getting a letter like this, besides the orthopedic surgeon letter.
Well, I think we can look at our community first. I mean, so when you talk to Lake Forest High School, I mean, how long have they had the varsity field?
They've replaced it.
How long, how many years have they had it? And you got Lake Forest College, you got Lake Forest Academy.
Twenty, yeah. Lake Forest Academy, and the college has added a second.
Have you heard of any massive spikes in injuries?
No, so we actually did get responses from the college and the academy pertaining to the injuries. They have indicated no spike in injuries. There's virtually no difference at this point between the turf and the natural.
I think we just have to be mindful of comparing apples to apples so that, you know, if they're older athletes, like college-age athletes are going to be different from even high school-aid athletes, you know, versus, you know, middle school and grammar school athletes. So I think we just want to make sure that we've seen data that's specific to the demographic. If I could ask you about this heat stress, I understand that these synthetic turfs are really prone to creating heat islands, and they can get up to 170 degrees. So I'm wondering that if we did install synthetic turf, assuming it's, you know, the best possible infill, if we would have some rules and regulations around the temperature so that we wouldn't allow teams to take to the field if it goes above a certain temperature to prevent the possibility of heat stroke, which, you know, again, I've read is, you know, can be tremendously, you know, harmful to a younger person who just, you know, can't, their bodies just are not the same as an adult body that has the ability to cool off a little bit easily, more easily.
So we are aware of the heat issue, so to speak. You know, we traditionally don't have a lot of field usage in the dead heat of the summer. You know, we traditionally don't have a lot of field usage in the dead heat of the summer. When we are out there and it's 90-plus degrees, we usually, like for camp, as an example, those camps would be inside and then would probably go to the beach or the pool. So we would certainly be regulating that, but we would also be looking for ways to mitigate the heat as well.
Okay, so then we, so then if a club team is out there utilizing the field in 95-degree weather, that's not a liability for the city? That's, the club has taken the liability?
Well, I would have to turn that over to our lawyer, but...
Curious.
We have that situation now. We have these clubs playing all over the place, people getting injured.
Okay, so it's not a city liability, it's a club liability if they're, okay, all right. Thanks. And then, you know, again, I'm, it's in terms of the chemicals released into the ground and the air, I, you know, we talk about carbon footprint, and I know there's discussion on how to offset, but I, you know, with grass, you know, grass captures carbon dioxide, we would really be focused on, I know you said it's important, and I know it's important to members of the community and to all of us, that moving forward, we would do everything to offset the carbon footprint.
Yes, I am, that too is a, is a strong issue for me. I want to make sure we offset. There will be grass, there will be bioswales and such, you know, plantings of trees, things that we can do to offset that carbon footprint. As we go through the engineering phase...
And again, I'll just note, that really is a policy decision for the council, so by the time, you know, depending on if and when this proceeds, by the time you are approaching this, looking at construction funding, if we can have recommendations in place about what a carbon offset might look like in terms of additional plantings, et cetera, what the financial costs be, and then you guys would ultimately make the decision if that's something you want to pursue or not.
Okay, thank you. And then there's, you know, again, I don't think we have an answer to this, I'm just wandering through your discussions with communities, you know, nearby. You know, it, it does look like there is a, there's contamination or contaminated runoff into the environment, you know, that there are synthetic particles that end up, you know, not, not just in our immediate vicinity, but also, you know, that it could end up downstream and to other communities. You know, I just, we obviously want to be sensitive to that, so how can we...
So again, through the drainage, as well as through a bioswale or rain garden, instituting those sustainable pieces that would help us to filter that water, that it would come also from what we use to treat a natural turf field as well. You're going to have this, maybe not the same, but similar types of runoff.
Okay. Oops, go ahead. And then the last question I have is the recyclability. I've read that turf infill is just, that you can't recycle it, that, you know, it's just sort of a myth that, you know, it goes somewhere and it just, it just can't be recycled. What has your research discovered on, you know, how, I mean, there's sort of multiple layers to synthetic turf. I mean, there's like the, you know, there's the pad, and then there's, you know, there's obviously the infill, and then there's the plastic grass. What if, what has your team learned with respect to how really recyclable the turf is?
So the infill, it would be based on the choice, and as we've reiterated, we would not go with a black chrome rubber that is just not an option for this community. So we would be looking at things that, for the infill, that could possibly be recycled. The carpet, you know, at this point, they say it may be recyclable, it may not be recyclable. They are looking, you know, several companies are looking for zero impact in the next couple of years. So we may be able to take advantage of that, but it will depend on how the industry plays out.
Okay. All right, so that's something we're absolutely mindful of and looking at sort of what's evolving, how this industry's evolving?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Sally, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up to some of this, and thank you for your questions, Alderman Karas. So I was, and I appreciate the fact that you're taking, you know, you're trying to do this in the most environmentally sustainable fashion, and I give our staff a lot of credit for that. I believe that when Chuck Myers spoke to the Parks and Rec Board, he talked about how many acres, and you were going to try and plant fairly mature trees in some of that to mitigate some of the carbon footprint?
I'm going to ask Chuck to step to the podium.
I apologize, I don't actually remember the statement. I know that when I was asked about carbon offsets, I had said that certainly we could look at the bioswale or the rain garden, whatever it ends up being, and looking at that offset, but I had mentioned that certainly trees on site, we would like to do that, however, there are limitations. You don't want to have too many leaves going into a, a, artificial turf and having a maintenance issue. That's what I remember, I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I thought there were a number, were a number of acres that weren't going to be artificial turf in this schematic, and that those would be really reserved to try and offset some of our carbon footprint for this.
That would mainly be the far west side, that's flood plain or floodway, which we can't really use anyway, that's where the bioswale would be. So that is, the majority of the fields right now would be artificial turf in the proposal. So it would have to be the west side, there's probably a few places closer to the building, but nothing that significant for trees. So it would be the west side of the park.
But they could be planted elsewhere.
Yes, yeah, at other, you know, we have many places for trees.
And I have another question, I don't know if anyone can answer this, but do bioswales break down PFAS? Do they break down microplastics? I don't know the answer to that, or does it seep into groundwater? I just, I don't know the answer. Do we know the answer?
Well, my personal opinion would be no, that you would not break down the plastics. Plastics don't break down, they would catch it potentially. I think the design, though, will be the key. How, you know, if we are instructing the designers that we want to put safeguards in place so that those can't physically move, there can be barriers. If it goes into the bioswale, no, it wouldn't break down, in my opinion. There's no process in there that would allow it to break down. It possibly could be collected, but that's my thought on it.
If it is captured or collected, then what, what would be the next step?
Well, hopefully it wouldn't get to the point of the bioswale, because it would be difficult, because it's, there are a lot of plants in there, you'd destroy the plant material to take it out. So hopefully, you do everything you can to keep it out of there, but if it did go in there, it probably remained, the elevation is lowered.
Okay.
And I would actually just note to Alderman Morris's point early in the conversation, that again, you know, in terms of, in the totality of the footprint of the property, how much is reserved for playing surface versus how much ought to be reserved for, say, you know, stormwater mitigation best practices? Those are all things that will get, you know, identified through the design process itself, and I just want to also emphasize to the council that is part of that engineering design process. The engineers, city staff, would be working closely with the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission to ensure that the project is in adherence to all of their applicable standards. And so they're all great questions to ask, and I hope the council can appreciate that some of those are going to be challenging for us to answer until we go through the design process. Really, that's, that's the point of the design. But we may get feedback from the Stormwater Management Commission that we need to reserve more space for retention or other mitigation efforts. We'll work with them in that process, but again, we won't be able to answer those until we've gone through the design, unfortunately.
And just one clarifying point, I believe, and, you know, I admit, I was, I was on some heavy drugs the past couple of weeks, having had a full hip replacement, but, otherwise, I'm generally not on drugs.
For health reasons, yes.
But my recollection is that, that letter from Mount Sinai really addressed sort of off-gassing, it didn't really address injuries specifically caused by artificial turf. It was, it was, you know, generally heat and off-gassing that may occur from some of these fields. Does anyone have a different recollection of that?
I have, I have information on that.
The study I was referring to from the city of Toronto, said there's some off-gassing when you first put it in, in the next 48 hours or so, but after that...
Typically, off-gassing with PFAs occurs within the first 72 hours of fabrication, and then once it is laid down, you don't have any measurable amounts of PFAs being released. And my understanding, that's settled science. To your point, though, it's a very valid one, it's still within those plastic fibers, so it is there.
Well, they were talking about as it degrades and as the sun hits it, and I thought that was some of what they were talking about in that letter.
My recollection of the Mount Sinai article was that it was very inconclusive, that it said, well, there may be these issues, therefore, you shouldn't do it. That was the, that was my, if you read it closely, they, it's, they really don't reach any conclusions, but they wrote the letter anyway, so.
Good information.
Other questions? I think it's, we've made the public wait here for almost two and a half hours.
If I could ask one question of Sally...
Alderman Rommel, or Alderman Bushman, yes.
Thank you.
We'll have another chance to talk, by the way, after the public comment.
Right, this relates to the engineering study we're talking about pursuing. The engineers that would be looking to do design studies, would they be proficient in both dealing with artificial turf and natural grass improvements?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to cut this off and move to public comment. I have a number of people who have signed up for public comment.
Coming around.
So let me just give a little reading of the ground rules here for the moment. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the large number of emails, letters, phone calls advocating on all sides of this matter over the past several months. Be assured, even if we weren't able to respond personally to each one of them, that all of your communication has been read and listened to, and you've heard a lot about that tonight in this discussion. Thank you for your involvement, and, you know, we welcome public participation. We're glad that you're here, and we hope you'll attend more of these meetings in the future. Each person will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, and please keep statements and questions as brief and to the point as possible. A timer will sound when your time is up. Please respect your neighbors by ending your comments when the timer sounds. Please don't repeat points that have already been made by others. If you agree with a previous speaker, please just state that you agree, rather than taking the time to make the argument all over again. And please, we will remain civil, we don't tolerate jeering, shouting, laughing, mocking, or any kind of public outbursts. So with that as an introduction, I will start into the public comment. Let's see here. Let's see, this is the group that came in last, so. The first person on my list is Mac Elliott. Is he here to speak?
[inaudible] stopwatch on my phone. Normally, I'm seated where you are. I'm directly across the lake in Barion County. We have about 40 miles of lakeshore, starting in New Buffalo and going on up past St. Joseph. I emailed all of you after hours Friday and mentioned that my family has about 100 years in Lake County, 50 here. I'm here frequently, I'm here for the next couple of days, meeting with clients now that we can do that without masks and things. But in my 37 years now with the county board, including the last several as board chair, we get situations like this where we have a full house. Usually, we just have a few old dudes who show up for our weekly meetings and complain about the public bathrooms or something, but sometimes we have real controversies. And we had one not too long ago about a new training facility for the sheriff's department and ATF, and we have a nuclear plant in Barion County, so their people need to train. And there were concerns, not about financing, because we're AAA rated too, but about environmental matters, lead and the bullets, noise, things like that. We'd been studying it for a long time. We had public hearings for a long time. I think five of our 13 board members had birthdays during the course of all those public hearings. But as happens, sometimes people got crystallized in their positions, and that made it harder to reconsider. And you can sometimes say, well, it's just a small group of vocal people who feel a certain way because they happen not to agree with me. But we were 13, and we were looking consistently at about a 7-6 vote. That's not good, because if you get a bare majority, you're basically fracturing your community. So we hit the pause button, we did some additional engineering, we found some ways to attenuate sound, to deal with lead, collecting it, protecting the environment, and we were able to put together a workable solution. And I think by the time we were done, we were maybe 11-2 instead of 7-6. Still, not everyone was happy, but we were good at something called consensus building. And it only took some weeks, after a few years, we were willing to take six or eight weeks to get there. I'm at three minutes, I think. Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to be heard. Take care.
Thank you. Next is Michelle McLean.
This is much easier in my bathroom here, but here we go. I'm astonished our beautiful, community, family-oriented, and environmentally conscious community is even considering synthetic turf at Deer Path Community Park. I understand and hear the concerns that flooding and loss of playing field has for field sports. However, the solution to a problem can never outweigh the problem itself. I think this is a very short-sighted idea to even propose artificial turf, as I don't think we've really, we've hardly considered natural, natural options, at least to my knowledge. I'm being brought into this at kind of a last minute here, but for those of us that propose the proposal, we don't believe our voices have been fairly heard. We have seen our comments deleted from the surveys and maybe glazed over, maybe the surveys were kind of sent to community members that were already very amiable to turf, maybe because their, their children already play those types of sports. For us, it's clear the fix is in, and no realm of good faith would any board member or city council that we trust risk the health and safety of our children and environment for this short-sighted solution. I know it's not lost on anyone that, that artificial turf is responsible for more sports injuries, we've all brought it up, and we've all talked about it. Illinois Bont and Joint Institute also agrees, as well as the CDC. Concussions, knee injuries, that we've all cited are the highest related turf injuries, but we're missing some other key components. #TurfBurn has been trending on social media due to the high frequency of serious burns and abrasions from athletes playing on turf. This is really common in soccer field players and lacrosse players. MRSA and staph infections, and also lead poisoning. The CDC names artificial turf as one of the leading causes of lead poisoning among children. Not to mention acute chronic illnesses associated with PFAS. We're missing a major infill component, which is the silica sand, which is 90% of the infill. I have the MSDS reports on those, and those are a 1A carcinogenic, so you can read that. I'm not going to take the time to read what it says about it, but it can cause tuberculosis, silicosis, and lung cancer. And that has been common in goalies because they're landing on the turf and the sand infill is being inhaled by them. So young goalies are experiencing cancer due to this. So I'm not going to read the MSDS. Aside from the health risks, we've mentioned, and I know Melanie's very concerned with environmental risks, I think one thing we've glazed over is that the turf also has maintenance. And they, the own company that manufactures this recommends Roundup to treat the moss and the weeds on the turf. So in addition, they use a disinfectant for the biohazards that happen on the field, such as blood, vomit, sweat, urine, goose poop, and the disinfectant is, according to their own MSDS, hazardous to aquatic life. And I think we're missing, this is right next to Skokie Valley River, so any disinfectant that you use on the field is going to be...
Wrap up your comments quickly.
...is going to be washed away into the river. My final, my final... My final, my final statement is I think that there is more going on here. I think that there's some connection to field tech within this group, our body. Because I don't know why we would do business with a company that is currently involved in multi-state class action lawsuits for fraud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Paul Hamon.
Paul Hamon, 63-year resident of Lake Forest. In the 1960s, when I played baseball on those fields behind Deer Path Intermediate School, we just had the four bases and we moved them to a dry area among the 10 acres. Problem solved. Major League Baseball Rulebook states that ball fields constructed after June 1958 must have minimum field dimensions. When San Diego Padres built their baseball field in April 2004 at a cost of $900, excuse me, $600 million, they ignored the rules. Baltimore Orioles with revenue of $250 million ignored the minimum dimension rules when they built their new stadium for about $200 million. If Major League Baseball teams routinely ignore their own rules, then Lake Forest can play on grass. Last time I checked, Cubs field is grass. Final comment. City of Chicago is encouraging grass roofs on buildings, but Lake Forest is doing the exact opposite with synthetic turfs. Solving climate change means sacrifice with no turf. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mary Galea.
Hello, my name is Mary Galea. I'm here because I believe fiscal responsibility matters. I've looked at all the slides and charts and I saw some discrepancies there. And I'm sure you'll be able to dig into those later, especially between the difference in terms of just the sheer cost between natural grass and synthetic turf. I do appreciate that the city, including the Parks and Rec Department, is looking for a simple solution for these obviously problematic fields. However, spending $11 million on plastic carpet that will simply be thrown out because a recycling solution has not yet proven available in less than 10 years is a poor and short-sighted investment. Additionally, to another commenter's point, it doesn't build community consensus. The primary beneficiaries of this plastic turf could possibly fund some of the installation costs, sure. Or we could rent out the field, sure. But ultimately, who will be on the hook for this continued maintenance? The taxpayers. Who will pay for the rip and replace every seven to 10 years? Taxpayers will. Who will pay any legal fees or lawsuits associated with knowingly exposing fifth graders merely attending PE class to extreme heat, PFAS lead, and other heavy metals? Taxpayers will. Lake Forest taxpayers will be forced to pay for this plastic carpet in perpetuity. Over a 50-year period, the total bill for plastic carpet will be an incredible burden for the Lake Forest taxpayers to shoulder when additional needs come up. Lake Forest elected officials, now is the time to show that you're truly a fiscal conservative, not just in actions, in actions, not just in words. Please do fix the drainage at Deer Path Community Park and make the long-term investment of state-of-the-art natural grass. Please be leaders with innovative solutions. I know that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Lonnigan.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. I moved here with my family six months ago, so I'm new to the area. I have found this area beautiful and the people extremely kind and welcoming. It's an amazing place to live. Hearing about the installation of possibly 10 acres of artificial turf in this beautiful area has been a little concerning. I will preface this by saying I am married to someone who went to college on an athletic scholarship, Big Ten. I also have two children who play sports in the area and I played soccer myself my whole life. So I very much understand and am sympathetic for the desire to have great sports facilities for our kids. As we can see, artificial turf seems like a hot button and maybe controversial issue. The safety of microplastics that are shed into the air and water system have not yet been sufficiently researched. And there currently is no legal safety limit for how much can be tolerated in the water systems. And it still seems confusing on how it may or may not be truly recycled. Secondly, young children especially can be more susceptible to heat injuries from these types of fields. And I know that player's safety is a top concern for this community especially. On a warm day last fall, my young daughter played a soccer game at the Lake Forest High School turf field. And it truly did feel much hotter than the rest of the area. She ended up drinking her entire water bottle in the first quarter and started to complain about her heart beating too fast. And we ended up just leaving the game and going to cool off. Third, I know we're all doing our best and making efforts to remove chemicals from the products that we use and consume in our daily lives. Water bottles without BPA are a big thing. Shampoo without parabens. The installation of this much turf feels like it could be a step backwards. Lake Forest could instead be a leader for making natural grass improvements and spreading that legacy on the North Shore. I thank everyone for their hard work in this process. I know it hasn't been easy. A lot of people have committed a lot to this project. But it feels like maybe more research and work could be done to truly understand the risks to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Chun. And then after that, we'll have, some of you can line up or get ready. Next would be Marcus Shabaker.
Thanks. First and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your countless hours and years of service for the benefit of our city and our community. Despite a recent Chicago Tribune article, I have personally found all of you to be beyond reproach and beyond personal agenda to act in the best interests of your fellow citizens and the city and our community. This brings us to why I'm here today. I'm here to plead and beg that you act in the best interest of our younger citizens, our children, to approve the DPM turf field for them. We have 15 fields that are unplayable for many months out of the year. And we, as a community, need to provide one surface for our kids to play nearly year-round. Following a pandemic, we had learning loss at the schools. Children had nowhere to enjoy extracurricular sporting activities as the options were limited. Please provide a turf field option for the children to play nearly year-round in the sport of their choice. Now, as an elected official myself, I wish to point out the similarities of both our roles on a governing board. We both have one employee or one supervising employee that makes recommendations to the governing body. We seek input and recommendations from subcommittees and listen to the experts in the fields that have studied the proposal for months, if not years. With our turf fields, your one employee or your designated employee, the city manager, has proposed this project over dozens of other projects. The Committee for Parks and Recreation has voted for it. The director of Parks and Recreation has pleaded for this for years. And the community is showing up to voice their opinion in favor of the fields. It is rare to see a clearer-aligned project than the support of these turf fields. To summarize, I want to say to you, community support, check. Benefits a community need, check. Helps our children, check. Proposed by the city manager, check. Affirmed by the Parks and Recreation Committee, check. Support of our director, Parks and Rec, check. Our children deserve a chance with an option to play nearly year-round after being isolated during the pandemic. I can think of no better way to express your support for our youth and our community than to provide a playable field for our youngest citizen. Let them play and vote for their approval for the proposal to evaluate the turf fields. I thank you all for your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next after you will be Yu Shabaker Koppel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. I'm, as you, an elected official of, in this case, Lake, Richard, the Board of Education, not in '67, but in '115. And as such, certainly understand the difficulties to make decisions based on information placed in front of you. And often, we have to discern if these information are actually relevant or accurate. By reviewing the package you were presented with, I got to tell you that I have the feeling that not all stakeholder relevant input was presented to you. And I use a few examples tonight where I think the data is not necessarily supporting the claim. The claim was made that we could raise $250,000 with a calculation of $50 per hour. That in my math is $5,000, $5,000 hours a year. That translates, if you divide it by 12, assuming 12 hours of playing time, to 400 days, more than 400 days. Which would mean with four fields, that each field would be rented out 100 days of full 12 hours per year. So that math just doesn't jive with me. We have just heard before that, you know, we already crunch for numbers. Secondly, you comparing frequently, or some of you comparing frequently, a 20-year-old car, which you're using, to a modern Tesla or take a different car, when you're saying that our playability is not there. The playability will dramatically increase if we have properly designed, developed, built, drained, natural fields. I would like to talk about the injuries that were mentioned numerous times. The most accurate data I have seen, and I've looked into it, I'm a physician as well, is that from the NFL Players Association, which has looked at the NFL stadiums. And they can do a very easy math, because if 16 stadiums was turf, synthetic turf, and 16 with natural grass. By the way, in areas like the Packers or the Steelers, which I would say are as challenging for an environment as ours, if not worse. And they come to the conclusion, not the conclusion, they can show the data and I can happily provide it to you, but I don't have enough time to recite it here, that there is not a little bit, but a significant higher increase of lower limb injury, non-impact lower limb injuries in those fields with synthetic turf. So that is evidence-based data, real-world data. And Ara, I disagree with you. I've worked for 20 years in the pharmaceutical industry. And I know that if I wanted to prove a point in a study, I could design the study to, that it comes at least close to that event. So saying that just because data by a firm who wants to sell a product is objective evidence, I at least put a question mark behind it. And then lastly, to the point of environmental impact. There's no question that natural fields can be managed with pesticides and fertilizers, artificial fertilizers. But there's evidence and success in other parts of the world. And I would dare you to look, for example, at the largest sport in the world, which is soccer, that none of the top clubs, none throughout the world, is playing on artificial fields for a number of different reasons. And they have beautifully maintained fields. So the environmental impact are many, as they've mentioned before. I thank you. I would urge you at least delay your decision, or even better, bring it to a referendum. Because as Richard pointed out, not the entire community is behind us. Thank you.
Next is Webke Droga.
Good evening, mayor, elder woman, alderman. Thank you for all your thorough questions. I personally believe that you should table this discussion about synthetic turf or just vote for natural grass. Or at least study natural grass before you make a decision. And since this will affect us all, I agree with my husband that with higher taxes, because we're all going to be burdened with higher taxes, you need to put it out as a referendum. It is not fair towards the taxpayers to make a decision like this. Fair process is important in communities like ours because it builds trust and gives space to authentic, innovative, equitable, and inclusive engagement. And ensures clarity about decisions resulting in stronger and more respectful relationships and outcomes. I have several letters and emails opposing synthetic turf that have been addressed to the city council and mayor, none of which is included in the packet. Some of them you have referenced, but there's several others. It's from Lake Forest High School varsity players. It's from seven different organizations. Sierra Club, League of Women Voters, Go Green Highland Park. Our neighbors south of us are really unhappy with us. I just can go on and on. I have stacks of letters here that has not been included in the packet. They should at least be public. I have a petition of 782 residents asking for properly drained, graded, and maintained natural grass fields. According to the packet, I understand the decision in the first place to pursue synthetic turf was based on a roundtable with four private clubs and one resident who fanatically is pro-turf. There's no voice for the environment, no voice for the local athletes or Lake Forest residents. It seems the entire project is based on the wants of a few private clubs feeling entitled that us taxpayers should help fund their extravagant financial wishes. Many soccer players don't want it. Many football players don't want it. Many baseball players don't want it, at least the better ones. And I know that you have been heard from one of the soccer clubs who said all his best players only wants natural grass. No professional athletes wants to play on synthetic turf. The private clubs are already getting the farm on Waukegan Road. Why should Lake Forest taxpayers fund this lavish project, yet another synthetic turf complex in our community that only will benefit a few private clubs? The letters are from, so, thank you so much. If you want to see the letters, I will happily forward them to you. And I also have a meta-study of the latest 20 peer-reviewed scientific studies, 19 of which discuss that synthetic turf is more, not safe for children and causes more injuries. The only study that goes the other way is funded by FieldTurf. Thank you.
The next person up will be Jennifer Turner.
Hello. I thank you for your attention to detail and for the time you've taken to look into the numerous details with this. The 1861 motto of Lake Forest is actually "Love of Nature and Science." I just want to emphasize that here because to me, it does seem that installation of synthetic turf is not necessarily consistent with that beautiful motto. The City of Lake Forest Strategic Plan also states, "We must strive to sustain our natural resources and environment for future generations by ensuring that policies, activities, and operations are environmentally responsible, efficient, and fiscally minded." And the Strategic Plan further recommends that Lake Forest take a leadership in modeling best practices and environmental sustainability. So I would like you all to keep that in mind. I'm sure you are aware of these words and the Strategic Plan. Just to make a point, I do not believe one can be sustainable and install an inherently non-recyclable product at the same time. I do understand that there might be future development, but that future development of future potential recycling is currently not there. And I believe that is what the decision should be based upon. I also want to point out, and I don't think it has been pointed out before, installation of artificial turf is an irreversible process. So in other words, the moment you take out the natural turf, you take out the biodiversity associated with that field, it is not a process where in five years we can go back and say, oh, oops, let's put a natural turf again. So there really is a consideration of where we are going with this. Briefly, want to touch upon, I'm a scientist. I do believe you do not all have, you have not all the data points available to make a good decision. Mrs. Rumel asked a question and I believe Sally Swartout answered it. Apparently, in the city, we do not have a natural turf field that is properly drained, properly graded. I find it hard to then base your decision of going with artificial turf on the situation where we do not actually have a best practices natural turf field in the city. I also would like to make the point that Deer Path, Deer Path Community Park is named Deer Path Community Park. I do understand the argument of playability, but it is a community park. It's the, the park that is located in the center of town and that is probably geographically accessible for all residents at equal distances. When I'm at the rec center, I see a lot of people walking their dogs. I would not want to walk my dog across synthetic turf, and I'm pretty sure I wouldn't be allowed to either. So I want you to keep that in mind. It's a community park. It is not just intended for the playing athletic youth of the town. Thank you for your consideration.
Jennifer Turner. And then Erin Helms.
Hi. First, I'd just like to thank the Parks and Rec Board, the city staff, and the city council, all of you for your time and efforts. all of you for your time and efforts. I know this has been a labor of love, and all of us here just want what's best for our children and our community. I am here this evening as a resident of Lake Forest for more than 14 years to share with you what I love most about our city, and what my concerns are regarding the proposed synthetic turf fields at Deerpath Community Park. I think many might agree that Lake Forest's stunning natural beauty is its greatest asset. From the winding ravines with their own microclimates and uniquely adapted flora, to the native prairie of the Middle Fork Savannah with its occasional blue heron sightings, to the glorious beachfront with its pristine water and awesome views. I have had many interactions with nature in our little special corner of the world that have taken my breath away. The time I saw two seagulls fend off a bald eagle encroaching on a washed-up salmon at Forest Park Beach. The time I came face-to-face with a coyote at a trail crossing in the Middle Fork Savannah. And the time I saw two magnificent sandhill cranes lazily exploring the gardens at Elowa Farm. I get excited when it's monarch season and admittedly steal a few stalks of milkweed from open lands to raise the caterpillars in my yard. I'm sorry, I know that's illegal. Living in a town that has done an excellent job of land preservation and stewardship has rubbed off on me, and with each passing year, I find new ways to make my own little plot of land more sustainable and less toxic. I began composting six years ago, and was just recently marveling with my son at how much food waste we have saved from the landfill. I planted a large bed of native perennials a few years ago, and have hummingbirds in my yard all summer. I'm planting two large beds with native perennials this spring, hoping to feed as many pollinators as I can. I'm looking to transition to organic lawn care, and one day, I will have one of those electric mower robots that I covet every time I drive by the library. I am not sure that I would care so much about any of these things if I didn't live where I live, and if I weren't exposed to nature enough to be able to appreciate how healing, comforting, and inspiring it is. Regardless of one's practices at home, or how far along the spectrum they are in adopting a sustainable lifestyle, I think most of us can agree that our natural spaces in Lake Forest are a treasure for all to enjoy. With this in mind, it baffles and kind of saddens me that when faced with a once-in-a-generation decision to revitalize our athletic field complex, the city is choosing the least natural option. I'm just going to say one more thing. The 10 acres that are proposed in the heart of Lake Forest, next to a recreation center and adjacent to a middle school, is the equivalent of seven football fields. Not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, not six, but seven football fields. It's my hope and request that the city council chooses sustainably managed, well-drained fields for the park. I see this as an opportunity for Lake Forest to undertake a natural restoration project that marries recreational athletic field space with walking trails, native plants, features that all residents can enjoy. I hope that our legacy is one of nature and not one of plastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin Helms, and then David Hamming.
Good evening. My husband, three children, sweet Golden Lab, and I live on Oaknall. We've been here since July 2018 and are hoping for many more years ahead. We chose Lake Forest for multiple reasons, but absolutely loved its eco-friendly stance, open lands, nature preserves, and more. We moved into our home with a soggy acre-and-a-half yard, but carefully reviewed and executed options including French drains, aeration, grading, planting native plants and grasses that soak up water better, and more. It works. I would much prefer my tax dollars go towards a better drainage system and maintenance of natural grass fields. Something I don't normally share quickly or easily is that I'm a cancer survivor. I baffled every doctor and did not fit any risk profile. I fully support organic, non-GMO, eco-friendly options as much as possible. A quick note on PIFAs. They're known as forever chemicals, because they accumulate in the body and do not break down. Nearly all Americans' blood is polluted with PIFAs chemicals, which have been linked to lower childhood immunity, endocrine disruption, and cancer. Children are especially vulnerable to harm from PIFAs because of their developing bodies and the chemicals' persistence in the body. I would not want my children to play on synthetic turf seasonally or ongoing. If parents want their kids to have more playing time, there are options nearby. We live where we do and have indoor spaces to accommodate climate challenges. I heard there's another dome turf spot going in too, which will be convenient for those in favor of this. If you convert the 10 acres to synthetic, you remove the option for residents that want to participate in the LF Parks programs but do not want their kids playing on turf. When I was diagnosed, I didn't have much in my control. But this, this is something we can control, a choice we can make. Is it worth the risk? I'll admit, the cynicism me questions who may gain from this, someone with a vested interest? I don't know. This just doesn't make sense to me. There are too many unknowns of what this could do to our children's long-term health. Please be responsible for their sake. We are all exposed to environmental toxins, radiation, you name it, on a daily basis. We do not need to offer them 10 acres of synthetic turf too. I worry I did not speak up sooner. I truly did not think it would ever get this far in our green community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Brian Dacey. I'm sorry, you're next, and then Brian Dacey is after you.
Hi, I'm David Hamming. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon, and I heard my name and letter referenced a couple times, so I thought I'd just clarify. I have four kids that are well into all these programs that we're talking about using the fields, and I'll be the first one to admit, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm all about playability and getting the kids out there and doing it, but from the scientific standpoint, I scoured the literature pretty carefully. And if you look at the peer-reviewed studies, which is really what the data is, there are more injuries on the artificial turf. And when I've listened to some of the presentations, have been part of the discussions in the process of this, I haven't felt like we've really considered that as a meaningful consideration. And no offense to Sally, but like surveying the local communities is not data. It's just a personal opinion, which is like level-five evidence. So I take care of the surrounding high schools, many of them have turf. I can tell you about all the ACLs I fixed this year. They may have had it on grass though as well, you know, but that's my opinion and perspective as well. I think you have to go to the data, which is what really, and that's unfortunately what it supports, so.
Thank you. Brian Dacey, followed by Tom Ford.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Dacey. First, I want to thank Sally, Joe, for the tireless efforts that you guys have conducted over the last few years. I want to thank our mayor and the aldermen in support of synthetic turf. I'm a lifelong resident of Lake Forest, returned here with three school-aged children. I have spent thousands of hours, literally, at Deerpath Park and the fields here, both playing, coaching, and now is the president of Lake Forest Lacrosse Association. Simply put, we are tired of inadequate playing fields. To be quite honest, it's embarrassing. I have been to pretty much every field in 100-mile radius of Lake Forest, and when we come home, it is embarrassing. For families that are looking to move to the suburbs, when they come and look at our fields, we don't have sports complex. The rec center has not changed since 1980. The fields are, pardon my friend, but they're trash. It's dangerous for our kids. This is something that is, should have been done 10 years ago. All the kids left, but most of them, a couple of them are still here, they had practice tonight. Guess what? It got canceled. So that's why they were here. They were able to come because it got canceled. My daughter was actually playing at Weneka's beautiful turf fields today, and over the weekend, while all the other clubs in Lake Forest were rained out. Now is the time. Alderman Rommel, you mentioned you need more information, more data, and Alderman Preschlik, I appreciate you calling her out, you're there to make the tough decisions. Now's the time to make that decision. This is for our children, and our future, and our community's future. So I urge you to please vote to support the synthetic turf complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Ford, followed by Dewey Weinbrenner.
Hi, I'm, gotta pull this down. Tom Ford, 1043 McGlinnan Court, Lake Forest, Illinois. Thank you all for what you're doing. It's not easy. Thank you all for your opinions. They're not easy. We've got different sides here, and there's great arguments for both sides, but there really are arguments for both sides. I think the process the city's gone through has been immaculate. It's been seven months. There's been surveys, there's been petitions, there's been community meetings. It's been incredibly fair, and to insinuate that it's not is really, really not fair. I think there's a lot of hysteria out there. I think there's a lot of broad-brash panic. Tab costs cancer. You know, you can go as far-fetched with all these different things as you want and come to the conclusion that you want. The fact of the matter is, between 1,300 and 1,500 new turf fields are being installed across America each year. Same decision you're making. Why are they continuing to go that way? They're looking at the same data you are. They're studying the same things you are. And time and time again, they're making that decision because we need a good, safe, healthy alternative. We don't have that here. You've got the chance to make a big difference for this community. It's 10 acres out of thousands of acres of beautiful space. It's in a perfect location. There can be a great economic impact. There can be a great impact to our kids and their mental health, because they're going to play every single day. Do the right thing. Vote for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dewey Weinbrenner, followed by Quinn Garrigan.
Thank you very much. To the city council, I wanted to say thanks. I know how difficult it is to serve in any period of time, and I know how especially difficult it is today. So I appreciate the service. We cannot say that enough. I did some back-of-the-envelope math. Lake Forest consists of 17.27 square miles. There are approximately 640 acres per square mile, which means there are about 11,053 acres within Lake Forest. We're talking about 10 of them. So we're talking about 0.1% of Lake Forest. We are not going to change the character of Lake Forest by putting in a 10-acre turf field where thousands, literally thousands of kids, would have a chance to play every day. So that, the usefulness of converting this space fully to turf field is off the charts. I've coached kids for years in different sports. We run into the same issue every spring and often in the fall. You just can't, if you walk in your backyard right now, you cannot be on a grass field. I don't care if it's state-of-the-art, I don't care if it's the Bears complex, it gets torn apart with very limited use in conditions like this. You can't do it. You guys need to do this. It isn't often in Lake Forest where we talk about something that's so substandard. What we offer our community today is so below standard in this area and across the country at this, I'm terrible with longitude or latitude, but this far north, you have to have turf fields. Elowa, open lands, Townline Park, West Park, South Park, Northcroft Park, Cherokee School, Sheridan School, Everett School, Deerpath Middle School, Lake Forest East High School, Middle Fork, and West Campus, we have grass fields, we have enough grass fields for the entire city of Chicago to come up here and play. That's not the problem. We don't have usable fields for three months out of the year. You guys need to make this happen. It should have happened 10 or 20 years ago. Thank you very much. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Quinn Garrigan, followed by Simrata.
Hi, my name is Quinn Garrigan. I'm a senior at Lake Forest High School. I have been playing sports since I was in preschool. I have been playing football on the Deerpath's field through my whole adolescence. In middle school, I practiced there almost every day in the fall. And it is just not even a field at this point. Every single, every single time we would play on that field, it was like the Mud Bull. Every single picture we have on picture day, it's just mud all over the jerseys, and every single time you're running or trying to make a play, you'll slip because there's no grip on that field, and it is just a swamp at this point. I missed out on my senior and junior, half of my junior year of football, because I tore five, I had five tears and four ligaments in my knee, and that occurred on a grass field that was not well-kept at all. Like, sure, in theory, a perfect grass field would be better than a turf, maybe, but that is not the case at our rec center, and it is not the case at high schools across our county. And I just think that if we, if I had the opportunity to play on a turf field when I was younger, or when I was in high school, which I guess I did mostly at West Campus, I would have been way, way happier as a player and as, I don't know, a person. Because when I play on grass fields, it is just, it's just, it's not fun, because it hurts your shins, you know, it's not as, you don't get as much grip as you do on a turf field. It's not, it's not like what I want to do when I go and play a sport. And so by putting in a turf field, I think you're, by the, the people that use the field the most at Deerpath, they're children, and they're playing sports after school, on the weekends, all the time. I don't really see people have picnics on Deerpath, I'm sorry, but I just don't. I see people playing football, I see people playing lacrosse, I see people playing baseball. Like, maybe you could argue, baseball fields wouldn't be as good without, with turf. Well, there's baseball fields at Townline, there's baseball fields at South Park, there's baseball fields at Everett. We have plenty of other options for grass fields, but if we want to go to a turf field, we have to drive up to Deerfield and go to their high school, because they allow us to go on their field sometimes on the weekends. Or we have to try to sneak into Lake Forest College, because we don't have memberships, and we can't just randomly go on their indoor facility, because it's not open to everyone. This is for the community. This field is for everyone. It's a park. It is for all of our citizens to enjoy and to play on. So thank you.
Next after this is Jackie Greca.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Simrata.
Okay, and...
You called on me just...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure...
I'm here today because I'm opposed to the building of the synthetic turf. And the reason that I'm opposed to the building of the turf is for two reasons. One is from a safety and health standpoint for my child and for all of the athletes that would play on this turf. Recently, some of the NFL league players launched an online campaign against synthetic turf fields, and they used the Super Bowl to drive home their point. The NFL Player Union cites research that indicates that 28% higher rate of non-contact lower extremity injuries on artificial turf compared to real grass, as well as a 32% increase in non-contact knee injuries and a 69% increase in non-contact foot and ankle injuries. This was recently in the MSNBC news report. The second reason why I'm opposed to synthetic turfs is from an environmental perspective. Synthetic turfs are made from a combination of three things: nylon, polyethylene, and polypropylene. These are the same components that are used to make plastics. The constant grinding on a plastic turf releases tiny fragments called microplastics into our environment, especially into our water. In June 2019, a study by the University of Newcastle found that an average person is ingesting a credit card worth of plastic every single week. And it stated that the single largest source of plastic ingestion is through our drinking water. Last week, several news groups reported that scientists for the first time ever have found microplastics in the human blood. The problem with plastic... The problem with plastics entering our bodies is that the chemicals in plastics are known endocrine disruptors, which means that they interfere with natural hormones. And these chemicals are now being linked to increased rates of early development in girls, increased rates of infertility in men, and increased rates of breast cancer in women. I too don't share this information very easily, but I too am a breast cancer survivor, without any history of breast cancer in my family, without any genetic genetics of breast cancer. Finally, a study by scientists in January 2022 concluded that chemical pollution has crossed planetary boundary. May I finish?
Mm-hmm.
The point at which human-made changes to the Earth push it outside the stable environment of the last 10,000 years. City council members, you spoke about not failing our children, not failing the people that don't have voices. If you choose a synthetic turf, you will fail them. We have already failed our environment. We are already in a climate crisis. When somebody comes up here and says 10.5 acres is nothing, that's not true. It is a lot. So I urge you, there are alternatives. I see young kids come here and talk about playing time. Yes, they should have playing time, but it shouldn't be at the cost of the environment. There are many, many other alternatives. I hope you choose natural grass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Greca, do you need to take a break?
Yes.
I would really appreciate it.
Should we take a five-minute break? Sorry to make everybody wait.
I just hate to, am I the only one who needs it?
No.
I agree.
There's a whole bunch more here. So I don't, yeah, we're not going to make it to the end of this pile of public comment without a quick break. So...
Thanks.
Can we do, like, five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. We will return in five minutes.
Clarify, for 4th of July, we are the ones who run it. And I don't know if anybody, everybody knows that, and I'm glad you all love it so much. And we are able to host that event on turf field. Won't necessarily be the same. We've talked about the accommodations we would have to make, but they're all possible. So I wanted to clarify that and give my time to Fred.
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work and volunteering for the city.
Thank you. I was trying to sneak out the back door, but Jackie grabbed me and said I have to say something, and I'm not prepared to say anything other than appreciate all the work you've done. I've sat here, the microphone facing you, for about 40 years. So it's much more comfortable when I know I can finish and walk out the back door here. But I've, over the years, as Director of Parks and Recreation, I experienced a number of topics like this. We referred to some of the, Finance Director referred to some of the bond issues we had in the past. And we've always had people who disagreed with what we said. We, certainly referendums have never passed 100%. And there's always been some discussion, pros and cons through, through everything we've done. But ultimately, the council has done what's best for the community. I've been with the Friends now for a number of years, but the last three years, they really developed a process, which is really, I think, probably unique to most communities, and spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of input on, on this particular project. I personally think it's something that is needed, and I think it will have a tremendous impact on the young people in our community and a great benefit. And it seems to me that of all the oppositions that I've heard, that about 90% of them can be engineered. And I think if you approve the engineering plans tonight or to go forward, I think you'll find that most of the concerns that have been expressed will be addressed, or you certainly, you'll have the opportunity to address them as well. So I encourage you to, to pass the recommendation of the Park and Recreation Board. It's been a three-year process, a great deal of investment, both dollars and time. And I think they've come up with a recommendation, and I hope you appreciate their time and their recommendation, and you pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. Next is Deborah Gallagher, followed by Jody Kofler.
Hi, I represent AYSO. We have almost 600 kids who play. Obviously, they have been off the fields this weekend and off today, and most likely all this week and this weekend. We need these fields. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Jody Kofler will be followed by Steve Malin.
Hi, thank you. Just wanted to have a few comments. I also was going to bring up the health and safety and the non-contact lower body injuries. This is from seven years of NFL data. And 28% more non-contact lower body injuries, 32% more knee injuries, 69% foot and ankle injuries. Turf can get 60 degrees hotter than natural grass, increasing the rate at which toxic gases are released and ingested. 90% of NFL players believe artificial turf will shorten their careers. The impact on the environment and sustainability are tremendous. Currently, turf cannot be recycled in the U.S., leading to an estimated 330 million pounds of landfill waste each year and microplastics in our water and irrigation systems. An average, one turf field requires over 440,000 pounds of petroleum to produce the, it emits carbon, it creates fossil fuels, and creates global warming. I'm also a cancer survivor as well. There currently are 32 teams in the NFL. 16 of them play on artificial turf despite the undeniable risk it poses to both players and the environment. At the Super Bowl this year, one of the best wide receivers, Odell Beckham Jr., was injured and removed from the game due to a non-contact issue from artificial turf. He was just running his route. A movement, a movement called Flip the Turf, and dozens of NFL players and thousands of Americans have backed the proposal to remove artificial turf from NFL stadiums. A huge petition is gaining momentum on change.org. Currently has 23,000 signatures. It's one of the most signed petitions on change.org. So let's be a leader here in Lake Forest and go with this huge momentum and say no to turf. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Malin followed by Brady Goodman.
Hi, I'm Steve Malin. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I commend what Fred Jackson said. 14 years I've been on the Friends Board, Friends Foundation Board, and we have, we did the master plan with no agenda whatsoever. And we did it to find out the great assets that this, this city has as far as the parks and rec. The study came back the way the study came back, and the study came back very conclusive that this, these are the things that we can do at the parks. 19 years ago, we lost my son to an accident. My family, along with the help of the Friends Foundation and Fred, we redid Everett School baseball field. Before we did it, it was, you couldn't play there. The kids had a cover-up because of ground ball. There were so many divots. It was natural turf. We, at that time, we did the state-of-the-art drainage and everything we could do. You know what? That was only maybe 15 years ago, Fred. The drainage isn't good. It doesn't last. You can't keep up with the shifting terrains. So I think it's a no-brainer. Do, we built the field for the kids. I had nobody to play on it. Do it for the kids. I think, give them an option. If they don't, people don't want to play on turf, great. They could play on the natural turf fields. Do the turf at Deerpath. Thank you.
Thank you. Brady Goodman followed by Wes Stevenson.
Hi, my name is Brady Goodman. I'm a junior at Lake Forest High School, and I play on the varsity football team. I'll be quick. I just want to say, I've been around the game football my whole life, and, you know, during COVID, I took up coaching because I had a lot of free time. A 7-on-7 youth football team at the Deerpath Rec Center fields, and it would rain quite frequently and mess up the fields a lot, especially with the cleats denting the turf and everything. But specifically, the championship game, we had two players go down to non-contact leg injuries, and it had just, not even rain, drizzled the night before, and the field was a mess. And by that point, we had moved around the games throughout the entire field, like the whole 10 acres, and there was no space left to go where the level, ground level would be not harmful. And I want to end on saying, I know there are studies in the NFL and whatnot, but realistically, the kid, the people that are playing on this are kids. They're not NFL athletes. They're middle school, high school level, elementary school kids. And I'd say, if you're a parent, you'd prefer the safety of turf over the unkept grass we have. Because in the NFL, those grass fields, they've got top-tier maintenance for those, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wes Stevenson followed by Tim Hender. Is Wes Stevenson here?
I don't know if Wes is here, so I guess I'll have to go.
Tim gets to go.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tim Hender. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thank you to the Parks and Rec Board and the team at the Parks and Recs for putting together this amazing plan. It's 20 years late, in my opinion. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and I care deeply about health. I care deeply about the environment. You're not landing something on the moon for the first time. You saw Winnetka, Wilmette, Northbrook, Evanston. How many communities already have these fields? My son Cooper was supposed to be here tonight, but guess what? His practice got slated later at Lake Forest High School because that was the only time they could get the turf tonight. Those are the only kids playing. All these young kids who need to be outside playing right now, all this stuff they've been through, I've got nothing in this because all my kids are gone. This community needs this. The kids of this community need this. I can't stress how, I mean, progress after progress after progress gets shot down by this city council, and city councils in the past. And I appreciate your service, but half of you are drinking out of plastic cups tonight who care about the environment and who are going to vote against this. Stop drinking out of the plastic cups. I mean, let's do this for the kids. The community needs this. It's, as Dewey said, it's .1%. There are 14 parks. This is the right project. This is the right time. It's the right place. It's one out of 14 parks. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Rother followed by Reed Kelly.
Hi there, I'm Kate Rother. Thanks for everybody for taking the time tonight. I'll keep this short and sweet because I know it's getting late. I am very appreciative for everyone being here tonight. I'm very grateful for all, for all the kids. I know the guys are leaving right now. I'm very grateful for that gentleman who stayed and coached. I think he was coaching one of my kids. I think it says a lot for the kids that were here tonight, especially those kids from the high school and those young kids. I know Alderman Weber spoke to that also. I think it's great for the amount of participation this community has had on this topic. That expression, this is a champagne problem, in a way, this kind of is. We're talking about getting a park or a field in our community, and we're having a discussion about it. I love the community involvement, but this is a special thing we're talking about. We're not talking about our cities in debt, and I'd like us to have a reality check about what we're talking about. I think that's important. I think, I feel passionately about this. I do feel passionately about the environment as well, but I do want us to check ourselves and look at the great situation that we're in. I think that's important. I do want to talk about, make a couple of quick comments here. One of the things that was brought up by, I think it was Alderman Rommel, what this capital improvement project, is it hitting the right people? It's going to hit, it hits the kids, and they are a small percentage of the, it's a group that really aren't paying taxes, is what I took from that comment. My point to that is, they're the kids, yes, but it's really families. We're hitting a small group of people that aren't paying taxes, but it's hitting the families, and I think that's very important. That's a very important group. A lot of the new people that move to town have families, and I think it's important that we pay attention to what families want. The other thing I wanted to point out, that this is an option. Having artificial turf is an option of a field. We're not forcing people to play on this field or on these four fields. We're giving that, we're providing that as an option. There are many other fields in Lake Forest to play on. I won't reiterate all the other comments that people had. The other thing I did want to bring up also is I think we owe it to Parks and Rec to respect the process. They have spent a lot of time, energy, and effort on it. We have had a lot of community engagement. The community has been allowed to participate in this process. They have been invited to be a part of this process every step of the way. Many of us have been a part of that process. We've stepped up to the plate to be a part of that process. And now it's time to vote. The information has been on the table for everyone, every Alderman, to have access to that information, and here it is. It's here for you to vote now. So I don't want this vote to be delayed. I urge you to take it to the next level, to ask to vote in favor of this, to get more information, get the finances, move it to the next step. You are in your elected positions to do that. I urge you to vote yes tonight for the next step. That's your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Matthews. Oh, did I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So my name is Reed Kelly, lifelong resident, born at Lake Forest Hospital, three kids, coached all through the years. Let's say I tally up $12,000 I've spent on, on sports for the kids through the years, and I've probably gotten $7,400 of value out of it. You know, I mean, so we talked about the extra $25 that people aren't going to pay per year. I mean, it's $100 in their first year, and then 28, and then a bunch of graphs. It's insignificant, relatively speaking. I understand that 60, what, the stat was 65% or something, 65 and older, whatever it was. But if you go to their door, like my 81-year-old mother who still lives in Lake Forest and says, hey, would you mind paying an extra $25 a year so kids can get hundreds of hours, of additional hours, that they otherwise wouldn't be able to, with the turf field? I mean, it would just be, hold on while I get my checkbook. Pretty much universally across the older population, which makes up the majority relative to children, I understand. So that's about it. Step one of this whole thing was don't come up and reiterate what some people have already said. People are seeming to do that, so I'm going to try and respect it. But obviously, I'm in support of the turf. I think it would be an awesome thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Matthews followed by Sally Grover.
Yes, I am Mary Matthews, and I have lived here for more decades than I'd like to admit. I did attend the workshops. I might have come to a slightly different conclusion than what has been published, but that's okay. I was reading the material tonight that you all received, and so I decided to also look at the recreation and, no, Parks and Recreation Department Master Plan. And when I did that, I was somewhat surprised. In the very beginning, they talk about the planning committee interviewed stakeholders, and that's good. They should be doing that. But I also read that, and I have to quote this, "They included one individual who is a Lake Forest resident and vocal proponent for community turf fields." So I'm wondering why was he included? And I'm assuming it was a him, so sorry about that. Who is he? What are his interests? And was there anybody else that was included that perhaps had a different point of view? To me, this looks like the process was tainted. I think this is conflict of interest. I don't think this is in the best interest of the City Council. I think it should table this and go through the process again and look at all the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate everyone staying late. This is something a little bit off-topic, but still kind of included. I've been a resident of Lake Forest twice now. I started the MRI department at Lake Forest Hospital back in the 90s, and then moved to California and moved back. I love it. It's a small town. It's a great community. I love it for the open lands. I love it, it's a small town, it's a great community, I love it for the open lands, for all of the nature and all of the wildlife, and it's just a part of my life. But I have a concern about the traffic. Deer path traffic has exceeded. I was told, and I don't have confirmation on this, that there are going to be tournaments, and there's going to be a lot of out-of-state and out-of-city people visiting our community. Is there going to be ample traffic control? Is there going to be ample parking for people, the community people that can come in to watch their children? Sometimes it takes 20 minutes to get out of my driveway on deer path. Sometimes people drive to the exceeding of 120 miles an hour down deer path. We don't know how I have a Ferrari, but it does wake you out of a sound sleep. It's very concerning as far as emissions go. And a lot of the people on deer path, the residents, have sold their houses, and it's very concerning. I know it's not a big deal as far as the turf, I'm not against the grass, I'm not, I'm very much an environmentalist, and I'm not for the turf. No one's mentioned what will it affect it'll have on the wildlife? How are they going to clean it? Is there any type of mold that is created between the sub and the top? I worked in the medical field for 50 years until I was injured, and cancer is very much an environmental, and what you put into your body. Yes, it has its genetics, but I did breast cancer patients, and not only here, but California -- brothers, sisters, aunt had it. It's what you put in your body, it's what you are affected by your environment. I just feel that, I lived in Evanston, where, yes, this is not, this is a college town, but it's not like a stadium. But how it affected all of the residents on Central Avenue and close, because it was in a residential area, was impossible. People were leaving the community because they couldn't even get out of their homes. Between the drinking and the vandalism, and all of the havoc, the poor police had to work in order to contain these people. I just would hate to see that happen to our community if we don't control some type of, is there a plan for that? That's a big question I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak who has not been given the opportunity?
Can I make a quick follow-up statement?
Sure.
And use all my time, but I've heard about the NFL players being really high-level athletes and missiles and everything.
Could you please get closer to the microphone, so you can be heard here on TV?
Again, I don't have an agenda, I don't really care, I just care about the data, and the adolescents actually have the higher injury rates, not the NFL players, not the guys who train their whole lives to be high-level athletes. It's the kids going through their body changes, their limbs are all gangly, their legs can't control, so they're the ones that actually get the higher level of injuries, so that's the data.
Thank you. Well, okay, then we're going to cut this off, because we're round two.
I have twin boy, I have five kids that have all gone through the school systems here, I have twin boys who are seniors at the high school, they couldn't be here tonight because they too are practicing at West Campus, the one turf field that we have, they practice from 7:00 to 8:30. Those two boys get up two days a week at 5:45 and drive to Winnetka to practice lacrosse. It's, so the safety, I don't know how we come down on safety, I don't know how we come down on environmentalism. We need turf fields in Lake Forest, we don't have enough of them, we need to do them at Deer Path Community Park, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council now for final discussion and a motion. Any final comments? Any other points anybody would like to make?
I do, Mayor.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank everyone for being so respectful tonight, we haven't seen that at all of our public meetings, and thank you.
Well said, well said, thank you for everybody to be being so cordial. Alderman Preschlag.
I have comments, I just asked questions, so I'll share my thoughts. I think it's really important, because this has been an amazing process, and I do want to thank the Friends Foundation and the Parks and Rec and everybody here, and everybody that's just been involved in this process, because it has been a process of two to three years, but as an alderman, it's really important to communicate what is your rationale for making a decision? And my take on this situation is, we've gone through the process, we've, we have the time to get the community engagement, and we just have all the data that we need to make the decision. And to delay it, I think is just an abdication of our responsibility as aldermen, or alder people, or alderwomen. We have to understand the options, just let the process play out, and analyze the data, we have all the data, and then communicate the rationale for why we come down on one side or the other. And all of us have personal biases and issues and beliefs, but then we have the role of the alderman, it's a volunteer job, we are trying to put the best interest of all of our stakeholders in our community at, in the front and center of our recommendations, but sometimes that's not possible, you can't please everybody all the time. But what I try to do is to be honest about why I'm voting a certain way, and I want to share those reasons for you, because I think we all agree that playability is the key issue. But here's why I think installing turf is a better solution to the problem than a natural grass field. So reason one is, I believe it's really the only option that truly solves our playability issue, and we've heard that tonight in spades. So reason two is that if we solve that playability issue, we can extend our sports season for children and families. We can start playing sooner, we can start playing later. You just can't do that with natural gas. And so natural grass, you know, in the cold months, if you, you know, if you tear the root system and you're moving on it, it just causes all kinds of damage, and it's just, it's just not possible to do that extension. And so reason three is the cost, the cost to operate and to maintain the turf fields are lower and allow us to have this incremental revenue stream. I think there's one point of clarification on that $250,000 rental stream, that's for all of our fields, it's not just the new ones, it's all in, and we can start marketing those fields. The fourth reason I support it is, I really do think we've done our best. It hasn't been recent, but I remember the fields back there when I was younger, they were built, they were pristine, we did put money into it. We never, ever, ever solved that playability issue, and I think if we try again and spend a lot of money and get the same outcome, it's just, it's just a missed, missed opportunity. And reason five is, both these options have impacts to the environment, and we talked about that tonight. So there's natural grass, there's fertilizer and pesticides and other chemicals that need to be treated. Turf field, you know, it is going to have to be replaced, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not that much, and hopefully it can get recycled. Option six really is the most important one to me, is that as an alderman, you're looking for opportunities to create new assets for families and children. In this case, we play sports in the community and make it an amazing place to live. And, you know, I come from a family that didn't really place a lot of value on sports, our kids played no organized sports, they're Montessori kids, and so my wife and I are both heavily involved in open lands, I'm on the Environmental Sustainability Committee. We care very much about the environment, but you can care about the environment and have strong personal beliefs, but also before this turf field. It's not mutually exclusive, and those two things can coexist, and it's our responsibility to lead, and we're never, ever, ever going to reconcile these two camps. We have, we have, it's not Hatfields and McCoys, but it's just irreconcilable, so I just think we have to communicate what we think, what our proper role is in alderman, articulate that, and then vote, and then move on as a community.
Other comments?
No, procedural question. So, as I mentioned, I'm not interested in 10 acres, I'm interested in less than that. Can, if we vote on the encumbrance for the design project, can they come back with a smaller footprint option as part of their design?
We can always have the, we can direct staff to make sure that that's explored thoroughly.
Yeah, and I guess I would suggest in that context, would the council be open to several options in terms of scope and size of the field, because I think it would be helpful in that context if you did 10 acres and something smaller, to allow you guys then to have an informed discussion of what does that mean in terms of number of fields, how you can, you know, configure the fields appropriately to maximize usage? Those are all the type of questions we would need to answer through the design process, but certainly we can incorporate into the specs, looking at synthetic turf fields of varying footprints.
Jeff, that's a great point, but if that's done, I think you have to acknowledge, or we have to acknowledge, that that can affect the financial component of this. True that there's going to be a decreased capital cost, but our ability to recoup some of those losses, or some of those operating expenses, which is going to go to...
Sure, but I assume that they would offset, if you made it smaller, you have a smaller...
I don't think so, I don't, I don't think we can make that assumption, that's a pretty bold assumption, I think we have to be able to look at the financial...
And yeah, I was going to say, that'll all be part of the analysis and calculus...
I think it's part of the...
What you're talking about tonight is the design, you know, the design work, which is, would answer a lot of the questions that are out there.
Do the math.
With respect to that, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I mean, I'm concerned about sort of the financial implication of this, but I also, I think it was Fred Jackson who said that 90%, a majority of the opposition or concerns can be engineered. So I, I, today, at this moment, I don't feel like I have all of the data to make, you know, a very confident decision either way. I would, I would like to know if, through this process, we can understand some of these implications through this vote.
That's a design, yeah.
Alderman Bushman.
I share these concerns, and we've heard, obviously, different opinions, and I'm wondering if the best way of going to balance these different issues is to look at, I guess, what was called Option Four, at least asking the engineer to look at both, and to design something that would be a hybrid. Because one of the questions we really have not answered well is, you know, what is the difference between a high-quality field and, you know, I think there's no question, it doesn't match the playability of the artificial, but what is the shortfall? How many days and how significant that is in terms of the other issues that I think are real, whether it's on the safety, health side, or the environmental issues? And, you know, maybe some of them are unknown, but the unknowns are something we should be concerned about. So I'm wondering if maybe the best thing would be to ask, you know, a engineering study to look at the hybrid, because I think it is incumbent upon the city, especially the importance of environmental sustainability, the, you know, open lands and the natures that we, as many have talked about, to have an enhanced artificial, an enhanced natural grass field. So I think it would behoove us to maybe include that as, you know, the hybrid.
I beg to disagree, I think the issue in front of us is a recommendation from the Parks Board. I'm not going to go back and redo their work for them, I don't think that's the purpose of this body. I think that we do have a recommendation, and quite honestly, I feel like I have at least enough information to act on that recommendation, whether you support it or not, and I completely respect those who want to disagree with one of our boards, and that's fine, I think that's what we should do as aldermen. But I have enough information to make a decision, and I, you know, as several of our speakers have said, this is, this is why we make the big bucks. And as Harry Truman, one of my all-time favorites, said, "If you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen." So now is the time to make a decision based on what we have, and I would, you know, I don't know, I certainly don't want to step on the mayor's toes, but I, you know, I wonder if a motion is appropriate at this point in time.
I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from the Park and Rec Board and authorize and direct the city manager to conduct a request for proposals process to select a firm to complete an engineering and design study for artificial turf athletic fields at Deer Path Park. After completion of the requested, of the request for proposals process, return to the city council for consideration of the award of the contract.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Seconded.
Okay, there's a roll call vote?
George, I still have a question, so, does that include what I was asking about, that the...
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's been registered.
Yeah, and I guess I would just ask in that context, a point of clarity from the council, as I had understood your initial comments, it was not about adding natural grass fields to the complex, more just potentially shrinking the footprint of the athletic fields and leaving the remaining natural areas for potential stormwater mitigation.
And I'm still trying to understand that if this engineering study would address some of the concerns that have not been satisfied.
Yes, I certainly...
It's my understanding they will come up with a really ecologically best-practice solution.
No question, I think we've heard the council loud and clear on the importance of that, so no...
But only with respect to artificial turf, not with respect to natural grass.
You can make the next motion after that, right?
Well, I'm trying to get clarification of what we're talking about, which I think everyone has been interested in.
Can we amend this motion to say what we mean? I'm not sure that it says that what's written is, is what I'm hearing that we really want to...
The staff, the staff will come up with an RFP that will respond to all of these requests for the engineering study to address.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's...
So I guess I would note, as I heard the motion specific to the Park Board recommendation, the engineering design in that motion would only entertain synthetic turf fields, however, based on what I heard from Alderman Morris, we may look at refining the scope and size of the project of the actual athletic fields themselves, and would come back to the council with options, either the larger option and perhaps a smaller option, and fully understand what the financial and programmatic implications of that would be.
Well, can I clarify your point on the motion? Did you want to look at shrinking the synthetic fields and then also doing some natural turf fields?
No, just shrinking.
Just shrinking it?
And using the environmentally sustainable, you know, offsets to the extent possible.
So not the hybrid version?
Okay, there's a motion on the table. I would reiterate that the motion is to commission the city staff to engage in an RFP process to design a, a synthetic turf field per the recommendation of the Park and Rec Board, with the enhancements of studying ways it could be condensed, and also ways that it can be made as, as maximally sustainable as possible.
Is that the motion I've already approved, or do I need to...
Yes. So I think we're ready for the roll call.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karras.
Nay.
Alderman Rommel.
Nay.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Nay.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Five yea, three nay, motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for all your participation and your civility tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And there will be more on this as we get more information from the design process.
If you're going about injury data or adjusting...
Okay, so, next, I'll give everybody a couple of minutes to exit. Anybody needs to take a quick, another quick break?
I'll offer that, keep plowing.
Well, we got to, I... I need some more water. Is there, you got some?
You know, the stuff that imitates soil.
Next item is committee reports from the Public Works Committee, a report on the 2022 patching and resurfacing project. This is an on-the-bus item overview.
Thank you, good evening, honorable mayor members of the city council. This evening, staff is requesting city council's approval for the resurfacing and patching program, the annual program that we do. program, the annual program that we do. As always, we bid this project with the Village of Lake Bluff. It is a part of a larger project, the IMS study, the patching, out, contractual patching as well as in-house. We have 850,000 budgeted this year, 750 for resurfacing, 100 for patching. We received three bids, as noted on the chart on the right. Last year, we did two, about 2.3 miles. This year, we're proposing to do 1.2. That is because we're going to be doing more concrete streets this coming year, as well as some additional sidewalks. So we reduced our funding a little bit for the coming fiscal year for asphalt. The work, as it always does, will happen between May and July. We want to try and get it done before school. And we will reduce our, our pothole scope to meet our numbers. We'll reduce it by approximately $5,000. So with that, the streets, get the next one, the streets that we will be doing, Alden Lane from Green Bay to Tara, really just to finish up the Burr Oak project, because we'll be going Tara to Western. Ridge Road, Melanie to Route 60. The big one for us this year is going to be Conway from Telegraph all the way to Stablewood at the end. We've got a little bit of some reconstruction that we've got to do, so we're going to be putting a little more money into Conway. We'll be evaluating that as a future, much larger project, but this is to tie us over for 10-plus years. And then the final one is Milburn from Old Mill to Shawford Way. So with that, I'd entertain any questions you may have.
Director Thomas, I just want to comment. I know Alderman Bushman and I have heard from residents on Conway Road a number of times about their road, so I'm really pleased to see this on the project list.
Good, yeah. It's, Conway is in need of some work.
Thank you.
So...
And recognizing the construction that's going on in Oak Mill, north of there, are we being successful in avoiding that construction traffic along Conway?
Yes, we will be, yes. And we will, i- if we have to phase different things and work with our contractor, Peter Baker, we can do that as well. But to answer your question, yes.
Citizens appreciate that.
Any other questions about that subject? Okay, thank you, Mike. Next item also from Public Works is authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for construction of the Burr Oak area storm sewer project to D'Amio Brothers in the base amount of $3,896,876 plus a 10% contingency, contingent upon final legal council approval of the Lake Forest Lake County Stormwater Management Commission intergovernmental agreement, and approve a change order in the amount of $655,150 plus a 10% contingency, for a total not to exceed project amount of $5,7,229.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We are happy to bring this recommendation finally to city council for approval. This project is going to start in early May, and I'm going to take you through some of the timelines and some of the communication pieces we're going to be working on. We have 4.3 budgeted for the current fiscal year. The DCEO grant is 2.75. SMC received a notice of state award last week on March 23rd. Essentially, DCEO told SMC, "You're getting the money. Here's the award. Hit accept on the computer, and we're going to finalize the IGA with you, SMC." It means it's now or go. So SMC contacted, contacted us and said, "Please, get going on it. We want to see these funds. We want to see this come to fruition." As you know, the storm sewer study that we updated in 2019, this is the highest priority for the city. So we're obviously going to be increasing the capacity in this area on Burr Oak, Thomas Place, Franklin, Alden, and Western. The biggest part of the project, as a reminder to everybody, is the storm trap, first one for us. The storm trap's going to hold approximately 850,000 gallons, so it's not needed during every storm, but when the ground is saturated and we get heavy rainfalls, the storm trap is going to hold that additional water. When, in fact, things calm down, we'll be able to turn the pumps on. The guys at the water plant will monitor and oversee that station. They'll be able to turn the pumps on, and then the pump will go into that 36 under the railroad tracks. What this effectively does is it doesn't stir up the ravine behind Willow and Ravine Park. Otherwise, if we were to do this in a traditional manner, we'd be adding more pipes under the railroad tracks, which would be pushing a whole lot more water into that ravine right now. You're going to have erosion and everything else. So from an environmental standpoint, the storm trap is a, a very good thing. The amazing part of this project, we put this project out to bid and receive bids in April of 2020. The low bid, D'Amio Brothers, have committed to hold their original bid. So we have worked with them now for two years. Things are very tight. They essentially said to, to me last week, "This is it. We're getting pressure from Daley on price increases." So it's one of those now or never's. But D'Amio has done work for us in the past. They're, they're a very, very good contractor. They've installed numerous storm traps, so they have a very good working relationship with storm trap. On top of that, part of this project, we're going to ask for some engineering assistance, not so much for installation of the storm sewer pipes, but we want to have somebody that knows what they are looking at when the storm trap is installed, number one. Number two, when the pump station is put into service, we want somebody that knows what they're looking at and what to inspect to make sure the pump station is everything that has been specified. So Gee Walt Hamilton, we sent our RFP out. Gee Walt Hamilton was low. We're recommending them for assistance. Dana Olson has been huge in helping us put together a communication plan. It's been great in that she's been able to focus on that. Myself, Bernard, Byron, Jimmy, we meet weekly with Dana, and we go over this communications plan. We've sent multiple letters to the residents. Bernard has met with businesses. He's met with some of the residents as well. But we're going to have some additional one-on-ones with the different buildings at Crystal Point. We're going to have sort of pop-up on a Saturday morning. We're going to have an open house over at the high school on April 14th. Bottom line is, we're trying our best, multiple times, multiple ways, to say, "Here it comes. It's a $5 million storm sewer project. It's big. It's going to take five months. It's going to be disruptive. This is what you can expect." But in the end, it's all very good things. So this is a list of everything that Dana and others are going to be working on to effectively communicate the project. Construction schedule, as I noted, five months. We're going to begin May 2nd. They're going to have their duly-located saw cut. They'll bring in materials the week of the 2nd. They'll begin to dig a hole on May 9th. Five months. We've got to keep on schedule so we can get the asphalt and resurfacing done before Peter Baker closes in the fall. Our challenge is going to be when the Woodland Bridge is, is being torn apart, there's a two-week period where we're going to have to figure out where to route the semis. Woodland Bridge, when it's coming down, they've got to take the concrete off that bridge, so they're going to need to close Woodland. And that's going to be happening from the end of June to the end of July. There's a two-week crossover period with this schedule where we're going to need to send the semis probably up to Westminster, but we're going to work with everybody uptown to let them know that's going to be happening. And if the bridge can go quicker, it can, that's great, but that bridge has got to happen while the high school is out of session. That's why it's imperative that Woodland goes first. We'll get Illinois sometime in the fall. So the request this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the base project. And essentially, what we will do is, once the IGA has been reviewed and approved by our legal counsel, then with your approval tonight, we'll have an automatic change order for those additional items above and beyond what we have currently budgeted. And that is, that is how we are proposing to move forward in this manner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Rumel.
A question occurs to me, I think in our packet tonight, or I've seen it in the boards and commission packet, isn't 1401 Northwestern before us for a construction project?
Yes, yes.
Correct. That's on tonight's...
So how is that going to be impact? How are they going to build that building while this project's going on? Or have we informed them? Are they going to delay it, or blah, blah, blah?
I know Mr. Swarthard is still in the audience, but the thought is, this is the ... The perfect time to do the construction project on the 1401 Northwestern Avenue building, because there's going to be road closures, there's already going to be disruption, so there will be a lot of coordination. But get it done all at once. This particular area of our business district has experienced a lot of construction with Kelm Scott Park a few years ago, so the thought is not push it off another year, get it all done at one time.
And, and the people who are building 1401 think they can go forward with their project while this is going on?
Yes.
Always looking out for you, Tom.
Other questions?
I apologize, KU1.
Did they really? It was a, it was a heartstopper for you. I'm surprised you, you made it.
72 to 69.
Wow.
Question, Mike, if I could. In terms of the net cost to the city, we talked about authorizing tonight, you know, 5.07 million, but with the award of 2.75 and some offset for money that I think has to go back to SMC, are we talking about a net, you know, ultimate cost to the city of this project, assuming these numbers hold, at 2.571 million, about?
Correct.
Okay, but they go on different accounts, and that's why we need to approve this. Director Hall, I've lectured you on that in the past.
Yes. That's the exact number. 2.571, yes.
Brief comment. Thanks to all the city staff that has worked on this. I think it exemplifies the city's fiscal responsibility and through the grant process. It's a nod to our environmental sustainability and reducing the impact that we have on those ravines on the lake. Special thanks to John D'Amio for holding this price for effectively two years. And that really speaks volumes about them. And then just to name a few, former county board member, Mike Rumel, David, Bob Morgan, the people of SMC, DCEO, State Sterns Office of Civil Division staff, probably Julie Tappendorf, and then as important, George and Jason, for all the moving parts.
The Badger Squad.
Yeah, well, thank God.
All the text messages back and forth.
Everybody in that, and I'm omitting the people I know, but those people mentioned that none of this could happen, could have happened without them, so.
So the one I'd like to mention, Jim Lockifier. So Jim, when we were notified of the grant opportunity, Jim and I got on the phone with, after we spoke with our former mayor, Rumel, we got on the phone with the director of SMC, and these grant applications are very detailed. They take a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of going back and forth to say, "Am I answering the question that you're looking for? Are we on the same page?" But Jim hung in there for a long time, back and forth, put together an excellent application, which then was ultimately approved by the county board, so.
Good news. So I assume there are no further questions. This is one we're going to vote on separately. Oh, anybody in the public that would like to comment on this project or this proposal? Before, I think there are only two members of the public here, so. So I would entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for construction of the Burr Oak area storm sewer project to D'Amio Brothers, Inc., in the base amount of $3,896,876 plus a 10% contingency of $389,688, contingent upon final legal council approval of the Lake Forest Lake County Stormwater Management Commission intergovernmental agreement, and approve a change order in the amount of $655,150 plus a 10% contingency of $65,515, for a total not to exceed project amount of $5,7,229. Do I have such a motion?
Let me make that motion in honor of our, our one public person in the audience.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschline.
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, again. The next item also from Public Works is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for construction assistance services for the Burr Oak area stormwater sewer project to Gee Walt Hamilton Associates in the amount not to exceed $40,250. Do we, do we need to have public comment on that? Okay, there being none, any questions from the council on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschline.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, thanks, everyone, again. The next is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 15. First is approval of the March 7th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period February 26 through March 25, 2022. Third is approval of a resolution reallocating 2022 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Fourth is consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with the School of St. Mary holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest. This is approval by motion. Fifth, consideration of an ordinance amending the City of, of Lake Forest City Code regarding the Class C and, I'm sorry, Class C-1 and C-3 liquor licenses, first reading, and if appropriate, final approval. That is for the peanut gallery. Sixth is award of the lowest responsive and responsible proposal for dialogue newsletter printing services to Lake County Press, Inc., in the amount of $40,180 and a contingency in the amount of $1,800, for a total of $41,980. Seventh is approval of the purchase of mobile radios for the fire department from state bid vendor Motorola Solutions in the amount of $107,938.86, of which $86,137.30 is grant-funded. Eighth is approval to award a three-year contract to First Student for Recreation Department Program and Croya Bussing Services. Ninth is approval to award the Forest Park Boardwalk Project Design to Hayan Associates, Inc., in the amount of $60,000. Tenth is award of a bid for the Public Safety Fire Garage Roof Replacement Project to be to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Rutherford Roofing, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $378,636 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $38,864, for a total of $416,500. Eleventh is the award of the low bid for the 2022 patching and resurfacing project to Peter Baker and Son Company, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $850,000. Twelve is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Thirteenth, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Fourteenth, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And fifteenth, consideration of recommendations from the Plant Commission and Building Review Board in support of adaptive reuse and expansion of an existing office building at 1401 Northwestern Avenue for multifamily residential use, waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinances. Are there any items here that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately?
Mayor, point of information, item number 15 on the omnibus, I do have a financial interest in a property that is immediately across from 1401 Northwestern Avenue through staff. Reached out to the city attorney and asked if there was any statutory conflict of interest, although it was indicated that it was not, and that I was, I had met the standards. I just wanted to acknowledge that I do have an interest in a property across the street, but according to our city attorney, I still should vote.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. The other point of information, just for the record, for the public to know, this item about the boardwalk project at the beach is the result... about the boardwalk project at the beach is the result of a very generous grant or donation that's been offered to the city to fund the bulk of the cost of the project, and so the missing boardwalk looks like it's going to be coming back sooner than we thought. And we want to do this in conjunction with the Beach Bluff work, so it can all be coordinated.
Mr. Mayor, we're on the same wavelength, because I was going to make the comment that with the major contribution for the boardwalk, hopefully we'd be considering about naming rights for someone generous like that.
We will certainly bring that, take that under advisement.
And I'll note that we anticipate bringing this back to the council for more formal recognition and acknowledgement of, of those donors. Understandably, it was a busy agenda tonight and didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle, so I think at a quieter meeting, we'll take the appropriate opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the family.
Right.
Any other comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the 15 omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschler.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you all. It's been a long night, but I think productive one. I think we all learned a lot, and I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Except unless there's comment from the council. Anybody on the council would like to speak about anything that didn't come up tonight? Okay, now I can entertain the motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.